That middle mic picks up everybody.
Towards you, towards you.
We don't know your.
All right. I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is five oh two-ish on January tenth. This is the first inaugural second Wednesday of the month meeting of the Village of Port Jefferson enacting our new schedule that we decided on back in November, I believe we voted on this, to host meetings on the second Wednesday of the month for a work session, a true work session meeting, and then the last Wednesday of each month for the true agenda, consent agenda meeting. So this meeting will be real discussion through some of the resolutions that are going to be proposed for voting in at the end of the month. But before that, I'd like to ask the clerk to go ahead and confirm the presence of a quorum.
Thank you. Mayor Sheprow?
Present.
Trustee Cassay?
Present.
Trustee Laux?
Present.
Trustee Biondo?
Present.
Trustee Giuliano?
Here.
With that, Mayor, I confirm the presence of a quorum, and I'd also like to say that Attorney Moran is with us as well as Treasurer Gaffin.
Okay, great. Okay, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So our first point of order is to invite up Lisa Perry, who is the chairperson, president of the Conservancy, the Port Jefferson Harbor Education and Arts Conservancy, which is a fundraising partner of the Village of Port Jefferson. And so Lisa is here not for a presentation so much as just to talk through what the Conservancy's relationship is to the village. Many of us sitting at this table have an understanding of it, but some of us do not. So I just, and we just wanted to renew that conversation. I know you're going through some changes in your bylaws and whatnot. So Lisa, why don't you come on up and talk to us? You can have a seat at the table, as it were.
Here, here.
Here, next to Drew.
Hi, Drew.
Hello.
So I gave everybody a little, hi, thank you for having us. Couple of other board members are here. I gave a little synopsis, two sheets, just talking about things we've done and our plans. Basically, the Conservancy was established when the Village Center was being built as a nonprofit to help fundraise. You can see our mission statement is at the top. We're actually just revisiting the mission statement. This is the, what we're going with right now. We're putting together some membership packages, so we're tweaking it a little bit. Oh, I have another sheet. Do you guys need another one down there?
Look, we can.
We've probably donated over $300,000 in either in-kind or money over the years. The first list is some of the contributions. Some of the bigger ones were we donated all the second-floor furniture. We've purchased the reception desk, the flagpole, sound system. We had, we were able to get a grant for the Zamboni. We actually raised close to $200,000 for Rocketship Park renovations when, over like a two-year period, by doing golf outings and concerts and things like that. We are, we replace supplies, materials, printers, computers in the archive room when we need to. We've helped with the golf course beautification. We've also supported the village outing and some other things like that. We've run events. If you go to the second page, we have done many events at the center over the years, fundraising events that directly will go back to the village when asked for items that the village needs. Recently, we helped with the fountain for the Joe Arlen Park. And then I've listed some of our future goals and plans. We actually are hoping to do a fundraising campaign over the next year or so for the bandshell at Rocketship Parks, I mean, at Harborfront Park and the Jill Neese stage. So we need to meet with the village and figure out if that's something that you guys want us to do, so that we can move forward with some fundraising that we've planned. I did meet with the mayor and a couple of other representatives and trustee, Giuliano, and we went over some of the agreements that we've had in the past, which are, we're hoping to renew because we realized that there wasn't agreement signed in 2005 that probably has to be looked at, re-looked at, and maybe, again, some sort of tweaks to it. But we'd certainly like to keep our relationship with the village as it's been, as we, you know, hope that the village is just as happy with what we've been doing with, you know, when asked to do. Sorry, I have a bit of a sore throat, so it's like, I'm not, you know, really sick. So I don't know, if, that's like a synopsis. I don't know if you have any questions that anybody gets to read through this. Basically, really for the goals and the plans, we really just want to continue on with the mission to support the park. We've actually expanded that to other areas. We were just concentrating on Harborfront Park, but now we've actually done some beautification at the country club through some sponsorships and fundraising. We've also, like I said, donated the fountain, were part of the fountain donation at Joe Arlen Park. So we've kind of branched out to some park area, you know, because our mission originally was the Harborfront Park and the Village Center. It's certainly now expanded to parkland.
So this mission that's on this document, is that the standing, the mission that's been in place?
We, no, this is a new one that we're tweaking.
Okay.
But I wanted to have something for today, since, right now, we're actually about a month or so away from a brand new mission statement and a membership package. We're going to be trying to do kind of what the Arts Council does and invite community members to join the Conservancy at a very small price, you know, for families, and then introduce them to what we're doing. Hopefully, they'll come to like our receptions. Like, there was a reception this Sunday for the new photo exhibit that we host, at 2:30, I believe, on Sunday for the, for the new photo exhibit. We encourage everyone to come. And so we're going to be promoting a membership to help get more community involvement, for people to know who we are, because so many people have still no idea about what the Conservancy is and what we do.
So, yeah, so when we saw the agreement, Lisa, that I think that I shared with you and Bob.
Right.
Founded in a file.
Mm-hmm.
And I shared it with our legal counsel, just to get a sense of, hey, is this, you know, does this need to, the response is, this doesn't need to change if everything is still operating in the same fashion.
Okay.
It can just be newly dated, I mean, and expired five years after, I think it was signed.
Yeah.
But, but that, with that said, it's, just going forward, it's good to have that kind of document, whether it needs to be changed or whether it stays the same. And the brochure that you had as well, that was a couple of years old.
Right, all that's going to be, no, where everything is being redone right now. Where we had a meeting last night where we have graphic artists working on a lot of things right now. We're going to be putting, again, like, it probably won't be out until March, February, March. We have some things to get together, give to the, there's a graphic artist working on it for us. Once we sign the contract with her, we're going to move forward with putting together those packages. But we're going to have new collateral, collateral material, obviously, that we do have a lot of outdated materials right now.
And in the past, how did you, I guess I was involved in some of the Conservancy interactions and engagement with the village. And so what happened with Port, with Port Paws two years ago, and the funds that were raised through that and generated. At what point does the village and the Conservancy come together and say, this is the next, this is what we're doing, this is how we're working together? What's the, what's the process for that?
Right, well, we, it's been very, I think, casual, and I think, Steve, you mentioned to me when we met, that it's almost too casual, that it really shouldn't be Renee. It would be Renee calling us and saying, you know, what about, can you do the sound system upstairs, or we need new carpeting? It could be, it would be a request, you know, can you get us a donation of wine, or donate wine for the village outing, things that the village couldn't do. So it was very informal. But we've talked about now it being, becoming a little more formal between us and you. I mean, as far as maybe, because I guess what you had said was the village is not allowed to ask us for something like that. It has to be done in a different way, right? Is that my understanding?
Yeah, we can't solicit donations. But if there's an ongoing conversation with the relationship that the village has with the Conservancy, we can have that conversation about what are the Conservancy's goals, fundraising goals? What are some things that the village thinks could be good projects to work on jointly with the Conservancy? And then, you know, have an open dialogue. It shouldn't just be, you know, picking up the phone and going, hey, can we get some chairs?
Well, we try to stay away from that. We've, we've done a little bit of like a capital thing, but we really try to stay away. I mean, we've supported other nonprofits as well. We have given Licek $10,000 toward the Whale Boat Project, because we felt like that fell within our mission. So the thing we would really like to do right now is to cover the bandshell. I mean, that's our goal, and if something the village wanted us to do, we would start a fundraising campaign to do that. We're, you know, looking to get a quote. We have a great architect that has donated two great pictures, you know, renditions for us. We're looking to get a price point, and it would be something we would do. But we would certainly need a go-ahead from the village, because we're not going to go forward with a big fundraising campaign if we don't know it's something the village wants. So that's where I guess we have to figure out how that gets understood. Our Vice President Larry LePointe had said a month or so ago to me, you know, if the village agrees, it's great, but we need to know that they want us to do this on their property, on, you know.
So here, here's the question. It is village, it's village property, right? But when the Conservancy donates something, does it become property of the village?
Yeah.
Mayor, I would just, if they're doing any capital improvements, any of our leaseholders, anybody does capital improvements on village property, it should remain village.
Become the village.
It should remain village property in perpetuity. I would just advise, and I don't know how it worked in the past, but any, anyone gives the village a donation of any kind, whether it's services, whether it's material, whether it's new T-signs, in the furtherance of this board's objective of an open and transparent government, there should be a resolution that accepts that, vetted publicly. I don't know if that ever happened or not, but it should.
Okay. And.
I don't think we have a problem with that. We just, we just want to make sure if we're going to go forward with a big fundraising campaign and promote it for creating a bandshell for Rocketship Park and really, I mean, for, I keep saying Rocketship Park, for the stage, then, because that's what we did for the park. Everything we did was geared toward raising money, toward the million dollars that was necessary to rebuild the park. So we would just want to be clear that that's what the fundraising was for.
Perfect.
And then the, the work of the, of the village infrastructure works collaboratively with the, with the person who designed the, the bandshell, or how, how does that work?
Well, you know, we actually, that came up last night, just for a brief minute, because we had a very long meeting. Well, of course, the village would have to okay whatever rendition.
And does the bidding, does, would put it out for confirmation?
So then it would have to go out, like we discussed the other day, you'd have to get, you know, some bids, and I don't know if we'd have to do prevailing wage. We haven't gotten that far yet. We, it would be maybe us just giving a dollar amount to the village, and then the village follows through that way. Whatever, if we get a quote of, say, $200,000, do you raise that money and just say to, you know, I don't know, we haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay.
To be honest.
So that's going to.
With Rocket, with Rocketship Park, I think the village was doing the construction, because it was much more than we raised. So the village was, I would assume it'd be the same thing.
Okay.
In the interest of transparency, when we get to that point in the conversation, the architect is my husband, who's volunteering his time, so we'll have to figure out if I'm accusing myself from those conversations or not. Just want to state that for the record.
And he's come up with two beautiful renditions. We're actually inviting him to our next meeting to come back and maybe hopefully give us a little bit more of a dollar, a close dollar amount, or as close as he can get.
We, we just have to be careful, because we are government, right? So we have a procurement policy, and it's state law we have to follow. So we can't be, I would want to advise this board just to, you don't want the allegation that you're avoiding state law procurement by allowing an outside entity to do the work for you. For instance, you want to put a brand-new gate up, and the price to put the gate up, if they did it, might be $50,000 cheaper than if they donated the gate and we put it out to bid, or we had our own people put it up. You, you know, it just, you have, you have to be careful. But it's not the only village that does it, and certainly there's other 501(c)(3)'s that are fundraising arms and support village activities. But you just, state procurement law still applies when we're doing government work.
Right, we, we assume that, though. Remember, we said that the other day in our meeting, that we, if it.
More for them than for you.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I'm not trying to say you don't.
Yeah.
I want to, because, again, different iterations of a Conservancy in different municipalities work differently.
Sure.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it sounds great, and for a layperson to have to explain, well, why can't, we want to buy it, we want to pay to put it up, we could do it for $30,000, which is under your $35,000 procurement policy, but are you paying prevailing wage? Are you filing the necessary, when you add all that in, it's really $40,000 to put it in, now we have to put it out to bid. So it just, if you ever get to those close guidelines, I just want the board to fully understand, you know, the relationship and how it should go.
Would it be appropriate, and are the boards and administrations relooking at the agreement between the Conservancy and the village to maybe bring some clarity to, you know, obviously every situation is different, but putting in place in that agreement some of these guidelines that will help.
But they're guidelines not for the Conservancy to follow, right?
I understand, but the agreement between the Conservancy and the village.
And I reviewed, I reviewed the agreement. As far as I'm concerned, absent some minor tweaks, or if the mission of the Conservancy is going to substantially change, I really don't have any problems with the agreement. And you, you don't want to over lawyer a very good agreement, let's just say, and then add confusion where there doesn't need to be. Just the advice of how we need to handle our compliance with state law and participate with the, the very generous offerings of the Conservancy, we just have to walk the line.
Is it okay if one of our board members can talk a little bit more process for that, if she's here?
Sure.
Tracy, you want to say, only because she does, has a big nonprofit in the city. We just came up last night about how to get the money.
Sure.
How to get the money to the, to the village, or.
I'm not sick.
It's all right, I got my shots.
There you go. I was hoping. So I don't think it's ever the intention for the Conservancy to RFP or bid out anything. I think it's just to assist. So if the village follows the regular procurement process, and then, you know, we're fortunate to have Andrew's two renderings, and you guys say, hey, here's the rendering we want, we bid it out, now we have a dollar amount, then I think it's our position to help support that, and to find a way to raise funds to help beautify it. And I think that solves that issue, because we have no intention of RFP-ing that out. I think part two is to set up, as mentioned before, regular scheduled meetings to have collaborative discussions. We should set up, like, whether it's a quarterly meeting or whatnot, so then it sits on everybody's agenda, and then we know there's a regular time that the village is coming to the Conservancy meetings, you know, Bob's there as a liaison. But perhaps then it's formalized that we can go down a list of these projects, right? And to expand ways that we can beautify and help support whatever it is the village is doing. So the agreement we'll look over also, but it looks exactly pretty fine, and we reviewed it with an attorney, and then we can just update the dates and move forward absent any issues. And I think we can add some of that in around making sure that we're clear on who's doing a lot, so that you're not in violation of any kind of RFP issues at all. But I think formalizing the process so it's not a loose process would be really helpful, and then getting it on the agenda, so in advance, we know what you want, and you in advance will know what we're looking at.
Understand each other's expectations.
Exactly, 100%, but then making sure that it's regular, so it's not ad hoc.
Sure.
And then we can just keep minutes of everything and keep it moving.
What I'd like to do is share with you a list of the grants and the projects that are outstanding, the capital projects that are outstanding right now.
Sure.
And that we're dealing with, and where there might be shortfalls. And it's, you know, I mean, it's got to be, I guess, a collaborative discussion, but you might say to yourselves, maybe a bandshell isn't the most important thing right now. You know, maybe the Tucker House is more important than, than creating a new, than creating a new project, we have a project. So I, what I'd like to do is really do, send, send you all the open grant, grant and capital project initiatives that we're, that we're working on right now, so that you guys can take a look at that and say, maybe there's a, there's a, a review of the priority, or not.
No, I think that's a good idea, actually. And then if you guys can send it to us in priority order from your perspective, and then we can align it with the mission of the Conservancy, to go down and say, hey, look, there, you know, the village is looking at these top five things, these align with us, too, so let's go ahead and, and follow that same agenda.
Makes sense.
And if it's something that's so far off, then we can just bring it back and say, what are you thinking about these two? And maybe it's a compromise of both, right? I don't, I don't know that the bandshell is the first priority.
But in, in exchange, and in furtherance of that relationship, if the Conservancy feels strongly about a particular project, I think that should be a back-and-forth effort.
This is one, our Vice President, and we just had our elections last night, so he's going to still be our Vice President. That was one of his babies. He really, he had a couple of things that he had come up with to talk to the village about. What the other was, the stairwell down over by Pasta Pasta, I think, or Waterfall, or something over there. So this was one of the things, and then Andrew was gracious enough to say, you know, what a great idea, covering them. So that's where that came from, but if there's something that he.
Well, I think that's, that's exactly what I think they're saying, too. I think Moran, Council Moran said, if we have things that we're prioritizing, we should let the village know, too.
Sure.
So if Larry's strong about the bandshell, we'll put it up there, but also I have no transparency or idea into what grants we're talking about, so something else might jump out. And would we know, is there a way to look at it and see what's already been secured, what's been allocated, and what's outstanding in the projects with timeframe, so that we understand when the RFPs are being, or when the grants are timed out, and have all of them started? Like, are we at risk of losing any of them? I think that would be a good way to look at it. And then, no, okay, good. And then if any of them started and not been finished, and they have shortfalls.
Yeah.
Matches, things like that.
We'll have to go through them also to make sure that they're grants that, you know, you can have other sources of grant funding, you know, or donations. Because there are limitations to some of those, you know, federal grants.
Correct.
Right, and I, and I had mentioned in our meeting that we've actually partnered twice with the Gardner Foundation over the last 15 years. I've had to go out and sign, where we've gotten a grant one year for $25,000 through Jill Neese Russell for the Harvest Weekend. That was years ago, I don't even know how long ago that was. But, so we've done that. We've, we've actually secured grants already, you know, for things like this, so.
Well, I think that's part of it, understanding the collaboration. If we know where there's shortfalls, and if there's an opportunity to supplement, that's something we can do. If it's the bandshell, just as you're RFP-ing it out, and then somehow we're going to support it, we can also write grants to help support the things that we need to support for the village. So that could supplement what we're trying to do, other than just improving the membership and doing regular fundraisers.
I know another project, we just, we're awarded a 50% matching grant on, was the continuation of the Design for Six Acre Park uptown. And I know there's been some concern about, you know, that getting those matching funds. So it sounds like it's a good idea to get the Conservancy and the whole board this list, because I don't know that I, I have access to that document. And maybe each board member can prioritize and bring it to a meeting, and we can have a discuss, discussion with the goal of coming to consensus on the boards and, you know, the current administration priorities.
And we welcome somebody, the mayor, whoever, to come, I mean, Bob is our liaison, to come to us and actually present what the village would like. I mean, we would welcome that. We meet the second Tuesday of every month and at the Village Center at 6:30, so, I mean, you know, we get on the agenda. I, I guess one of the things we should do then is finalize, get that agreement back in, in.
Is that a MOA, MOU? What is it, a memorandum of agreement or a memorandum of understanding?
It's a, an agreement.
It's just an agreement, it just says agreement.
I think I, did I show it to you?
Yeah, I have it.
Oh.
If you, if, if the Conservancy has council that volunteers their time, and they want to take a peek at it, and you can get in touch with Sylvia, has my contact information.
Right, well, we have, we have two attorneys on our board.
Good.
So we'll make sure that gets looked at, because the sooner the better for that, I guess, you know, get that done.
Yeah. All right, and then you all know, do you have any idea, Rebecca, what the costs are of Six Acre Park? Because you're saying it's a, it's a, it's a matching grant, so you secure it, every dollar needs a dollar.
Sure, exactly, yeah, precisely. And so the two bids that, that were part of the package, the grant package that came in, one was approximately $100,000, and then the other bid was three, with three or 350, and this is for the design phase of the park. So taking it from a conceptual design to creating shovel-ready plans.
Right.
For, with which the village would then go out for another series of grants for that, that next phase of the project. So, again, we, we got those bids for the grant package, but we would have to go back out to bid again to secu, you know, secure and review, and be sure that we're looking at, you know, and choosing the bid that's appropriate for the project, you know, lowest cost at, at, you know, best value, and, and seeing where we land there.
We have to dig those two bids out.
Yeah, yeah, it should, should be in the whole package, but, well, I'll, I'll make a note to review, you know, pull that up and send that around again.
Great.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Tracy, you should be president.
Thank you.
Whose glasses are those yours first?
I got voted in again, so you're stuck with me for another two years.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, now we are moving on to, any questions about the Conservancy that are outstanding? Anything?
No, just grateful for all that they've done, and that they're continuing to look, to help the village accomplish its goals for a better life for all residents and visitors. So thank you.
Okay, so monthly reports. This is, we're looking at a little bit of a different format on this as well. What we have done is we asked the department heads, and you, you all have this, but I'm going to say this out loud, you know what we did here. We asked all department heads in every, Parks, Recreation Village Center, Highway Department, Planning and Building, Clerk's Office, Treasurer's Office.
Code.
And code, to put together a monthly report on the highlights and the activities that they had been working on for that previous month. And we, we thought that this would be a great way to help the residents see exactly what the staff, what, what the employees are doing on their behalf to, to keep the village operating and moving forward. And it, it really helped me understand that, too, I'll tell you. To, to be perfectly honest, when I read through some of these reports, I was like, I was blown away at how much work our, our people do. And so I'm very appreciative of that, I will say that out loud, and knowing everything that they do. I mean, I spend a lot of time here myself, but that was so eye-opening. And what Sylvia has done, and she can go through each of these sort of report highlights from each of the, the department heads, she highlighted some of the highlights, and will, will report on that. But if you, if anything struck you in, in the reports that you saw, and you want to call it out, please feel, feel free to do so. And turning it to you, Sylvia.
Thank you, I appreciate that. There are a variety of resolutions that we know will already be on the agenda for the 31st, or are proposed for the 31st. That's the next meeting. However, there are some that will be added on. I already have two, as part of my report. The first one is to accept by ratification the event application of James Luciano on behalf of the bid for the ICE Festival. And the ICE Festival is on the 27th and 28th of this month. So that'll appear on the 31st, but as a ratification. The second resolution that I have as an add-on is to accept the proposal submitted by Island Tech Services, and that is for the provision and installation of disaster recovery hardware and the migration of email accounts. So to put it simply, we would like to change our emails to .gov. This is very important in terms of security, and we are moving from Gmail to Office, again, for security reasons. Enhance security for our servers, as well as all our email records. This has been a long time coming. We have worked with this company for quite some time. We've worked with them diligently on this proposal, so we're looking forward to this very needed change. Are there any questions on either one of those two additions?
Is the proposal in this packet, or will it be sent?
It will be sent.
Okay.
Absolutely. And it will also be attached to the agenda for the 31st.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome. Just to highlight the resolutions, some of the resolutions on my report, the first and The first and possibly most important is the resolution approving the proposal submitted by Civic Plus. This is the company that was chosen after the RFP process to provide website, let's call it revitalization services, um, to our village. They are the lowest responsible bidder. They have the deep experience, and they have website building and maintenance experience. We received approximately sixty, perhaps more, responses.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, it was really, it was really, um, a very concerted effort, and we whittled down to three, and of those three, we're confident in the choice of Civic Plus. So that's very exciting. We're looking forward to starting the revitalization of our website very shortly.
Do we have sort of the main points of, um, the main differences that we're, that we're gonna be looking at, you know, for the public's sake as far as formatting of the web? Like, like what are the main issues we're looking to solve with the new website?
First and foremost, in my opinion, is ease of use.
Mm-hmm.
I find our website to be a tad convoluted, and we sometimes have the same information posted twice, which is great, but it's not very easy to find in either respect. It's a little bit antiquated in format. There are much cleaner and clearer versions available right now. We're going to have a combination of something that is, let's call it stock, with, um, also what we desire with, in terms of color, in terms of format, in terms of layout. And that's part of what kept the price a little bit lower.
Great.
And I'm familiar with Civic, Civic Plus. I, we, we never used them in any of my villages, but I know a lot of villages, you know, on the, in the island and state do use it, so.
They do.
As part of their yearly contract, will they re-up, redesign as needed?
Yes.
And they'll maintain throughout the course of the year?
Yes.
Yeah, at the, at that flat rate?
Yes.
Yeah, and does this affect at all then the contract that we have with the Social Butterfly? Were they doing our website updates?
Oh, so, Social Butterfly isn't a, a maintenance necessarily service. It is a content posting and development, and they, they post the content. So Civic Plus doesn't necessarily post your content that you provide. Um, they maintain, you know, if you need a new page here or there, so I...
Correct.
Maybe you have more information on that than, than I do, but...
No, that's correct, but they will, they will be helping us with migration, which will be, which will be quite a task. But we're, we're looking, we're looking forward to doing this as quickly as possible, but also as properly as possible, so that we get an end result that we are all very happy with the first time.
Sure, and so Social Butterfly will be able to still post content on our website? And they'll be, this, this includes training, any training that's necessary?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. There are two resolutions where I'm asking that we ratify the acceptance of either a proposal or a quotation. Both are for a company called GEI Consultants, and both are having to do with the Bluff. So the first one is for a proposal that allows GEI to submit reports on our behalf, their annual compliance reports, to the DEC and the Department of State. That's the first one. The second one is for the provision of drone, drone, excuse me, surveillance services, which we need for astrotopographical data for the Bluff. So we need to, we need to proceed with these sooner rather than later, especially given recent events. So we'll be, with the board's permission, we'll be proceeding with that as soon as possible, and the resolutions will read as ratifications for that reason.
Quick question, on the drone surveillance?
Yes.
And this is from my edification as well as the public. It, are they doing like, um, what is it called, GIS via aerial, so that they can see shifts in the Bluff? Is it that kind of, so, in other words, are they mapping it so that they can see if anything's shifting in a very minute way?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
The purpose is to compare it with the previous.
With the previous.
And is this a, a regularly scheduled, or is it when we have large events that, that have visually affected the Bluff project?
This is, this is scheduled, it's part of trying to get off the ground with the Phase Two.
Okay.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Okay. Yeah. Um, and is there, just as part of this conversation, is there any update on the damage that occurred on the Bluff, uh, terracing? During the last, not the, not, yeah, I was gonna say, not the, not this last storm, not the one before.
There's three sections, three sections of the Bluff have been damaged.
Yeah.
And, um, the, the first two storms, uh, damaged two sections of the east side of the Bluff. This last storm last night damaged the west side of the Bluff. So we're really concerned. We're, been together, meeting with the contractor and the engineer to really talk through the contract, see what we, what are, what we can, what we can do.
I see, I see Attorney Moran ready.
I, I just, I just wanna make sure that the information, 'cause, you know, there are, there are issues, and they may be contract issues, so, but...
Sure.
Um, I had a conversation with the mayor and the, and the clerk this afternoon. Um, they forwarded me over the, the contract, um, to see how best to remedy the conditions that have been damaged.
Okay, so we will, the board will be kept apprised either in executive session if not, if appropriate, or, or otherwise.
Well said.
Very good, thank you.
Another storm Friday and possibly Tuesday into Wednesday.
Yeah.
Well, nature's gonna do her best.
In, in other news, in other news, um, you know, we posted an, an, an announcement from P, at the request of FEMA through the Department of, uh, of, um, state?
State.
To, uh, alert the public, and I'm doing it again here, that this project that's forthcoming, Phase Two of the Bluff, is funded by a federal approp, appropriate, will be funded through a credit, federal appropriation. So that's, that's a positive step on the Upland Wall project.
Absolutely, and there's still no timeline on, that's obviously a very important, important step to be sure that it's being funded, and a great news for taxpayers here, because, was that three point nine million?
Seven five.
Seventy-five percent of the...
Three point seven five.
Seventy-five percent of the project.
Okay, very good, thank you. Um, so that's, you know, that's a huge burden off of our taxpayers and, uh, you know, a great feat that would, that, that was secured, um, last year. So, um, so yeah, just looking at the timeline and knowing that Phase Two, since Phase One, uh, you know, was decided to be built, Phase Two is necessary for the health essentially of Phase One, as I understand it. So, um, just, I, I'm sure that everyone's working towards a timeline that's as short as possible, uh, but just, you know, any, anything that we can be doing to make sure that's expedited.
We definitely are, and within that, we have certain requirements. This FEMA notice carries with it a fifteen-day period, um, after which comments can be made. So the notice is already on our website and will appear in the newspaper tomorrow.
And is that comments from the public?
Yes. Yes.
So we're welcoming comments from the public about the FEMA notice?
Yeah, that's what the requirement is.
It's a requirement.
Yes, it's required. Um, that, so that the public knows that the federal government is funding part of the project.
Sure, very good.
Moving to the informational portion of my report, just quickly, the property tax grievance period is now open. Grievance Day is on the twentieth of February this year. Our senior tax cashier, Kelly Riley, has already been quite busy helping a variety of residents at Village Hall. Any questions, please feel free to contact her. As updates, the hourly minimum wage increased to sixteen dollars per hour, effective the first of this month.
Did we cover PW Grocer? One, two, three, four?
Now with the GEI.
It's another FEMA project, so...
The Recharge Basin.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you, but...
That's okay, that's okay. There is, um, we'll, I'll call out, uh, there is a resolution that will appear on, at the meeting on the thirty-first, approving the proposal submitted by PW Grocer. The amount is twenty-four thousand dollars. That's to provide engineering and consulting services, and that is for the Recharge Basin at Old Homestead Road. That's mitigation work.
That's part two of a project that was funded by FEMA also after, as a result of, uh, the su, the storm Ida?
Ida.
Ida.
So, um, the Recharge Basin was rebuilt, reconstructed, with some mitigating, um, basins along the rest of the, um, the, 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 the venue, uh, the groin. Call it, what do you wanna call it?
The outflow.
The outfloat, yeah, yeah. So, um, the, the recharge basin, the redesign is working. It's capturing the water. It's not, um, breaking down, or it's not, and it's not overflowing on the outside of the, the basin, but, and it, but it's, we're getting so much water that even these six ba, ex, six extra basins that are put down in the outflow area are not capturing all the water. The ground is not, not stable. It's very sandy, um, because of what happened before. So the water is just like creating more, um, crevasses and pathways, and it's like a, it's like a rapid that's coming down that, that, um, that, that, that water flow is like a, is like a Colorado rapid. And it comes down to Oakwood Road and runs down into the harbor, and there's, there's silt and sediment left behind every, every single, after every single one of these storms. These storms were like over six inches of water, yeah. So, but, so Phase Two is for PW Grocer to go take a, they've already looked at it, they've walked it, they, there's some ideas that they have in mind, but to put the designs on paper, and then, um, bring in a contractor to build that out, and we'll see what those designs are pretty, pretty quickly, because they've, they're pretty familiar with the, the issues.
So did PW design the first version of this?
PW Grocer was the engineer on, on Phase One.
And do we know what they designed, because it, usually these projects are designed by, you know, for a, a six-inch storm, or an eight-inch, or a three-inch storm. Do we know what specs they decide?
So they didn't have a lot of choice about that. They had to redesign it as it, as it originally was.
Why, why is that?
Because it was funded by FEMA. That's a requirement, I'm, I'm told.
Just replace in kind?
Exactly.
Okay.
There's, there was two steps to it, so they had to fix what was damaged by the storm completely. And then they were allowed a certain amount of mitigation that they could do in conjunction after they did the fix.
Yeah.
This portion, uh, we have another two-hundred-and-forty thousand of FEMA dollars that we can spend on additional mitigation, because they allow, there's a formula they use. They say, here, you can do this much more mitigation related to this project.
Great, thank you.
And this twenty-four thousand is part of that two-forty, and then we'll have the rest to do whatever design is decided upon by the board.
Excellent, thank you. That was my next question is, uh, you know, to, to fix what was there. Obviously, it broke likely for a reason, and, and so that's the, uh, that's the next step. So glad to know that that twenty-four thousand is covered by the FEMA grant and whatever comes next, in part at least, so.
Yeah, so we do have some flood study grants, and hopefully we can take a look at that Old Homestead. Um, what do you call it, a sle, sleuthway?
The sleuthway is the, the concrete bit.
No, it's, it's just an outflow.
Yeah, a valley.
What's happening down there is...
It's the stormwater. We're looking at the stormwater running down, running down Old Homestead Road that pours right into...
The tanks they put in do not take the water that we're having over the past year and a half or so.
And we, we could rebrand this as Port Jeff Falls, like a waterfall, right? And just, the conservancy might dip in.
So anyway, that's what that's about. And that grant does have to be utilized by, um, we have to finish that project by May thirty-first, correct?
May thirty-first, we have the, you know, an extension to get it done.
Okay.
Great.
All right.
Again, informational, we have, um, we are in the process of ongoing conversations with TPG regarding the status of the facility at the country club and continue to work through challenges. As a, as a new item for the board, um, I would like to say that we continue to maintain a service that is not required, but sometimes remains necessary, and that is verbatim transcription. So I asked the treasurer to provide us with the amount that we spent last year on such transcription, and it was twelve thousand, a little over twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand one hundred dollars. So I would like to suggest that we consider the prospect of only having verbatim transcript for public hearings, for meetings where there are public hearings required, as we are doing this evening. We don't, we don't have the transcriptionist here this evening. So I wanted to suggest that and let you also know that we did a little bit of investigation with neighboring villages and towns, and found that it is not the norm, in fact, to have verbatim transcripts. Many do if there are public hearings, but verbatim transcripts for each meeting are not, are absolutely not the norm. We do have, our meetings are being recorded, and those are being archived.
And if you needed a transcript, is it legal to take that stream and...
It is.
Yes.
Sorry. Yes, and it, it can be done, it can be done upon request.
For any purpose, if, if you needed it, we could, at any time, because they are, they are archived.
And is there a, a set policy? I know that with COVID, we jumped into online meetings and recorded meetings, and the public has been hugely receptive to having the ability to tune into a meeting at, at their schedule. Is there a policy as far as how long, you know, sort of a minimum that the village will be keeping the recordings on the YouTube channel, and then is it a, a foil form? Or what is the, uh, what is the process by which the public would access videos that have, uh, are no longer on the YouTube channel?
That would be a foil.
That, that would be a foil.
The retention on the YouTube, I don't know you, what your subscription is with YouTube or what that policy is, but if anyone else knows, feel free to jump in, but, um, but once it comes down and it's just part of our records, it's subject to foil.
Sure, I just don't know if, I, I know I have not been a part of a conversation that looks at that, so again, just for transparency and, and public knowledge, if we say the village will have the videos up for a minimum of six months or a three mon, you know, whatever it is, um, I, I think that would be a, a good use of just quick, get it down, put it on record.
Well, I agree. I think we need to, um, have some system in place where we are, uh, archiving those recordings.
Per the record retention schedule of the old state.
Exactly, yep. So we need to, we need to retain them, we need to archive them, and wherever that ends up, um, landing, it's, it's gotta happen, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any questions on my report? That concludes my report.
Um, just a quick question, if we circle back to, uh, the migration from Google to Office. I'm less familiar with, with Office. Does it also have the ability to have sort of a workspace? Um, like Google has the Google Drive, uh, Office also has the equivalent? Okay, great.
Is it called SharePoint?
Yeah, it's, even higher ed has shifted to, um, Microsoft, because Google has been, in their view, I think, not as secure. Much to the consternation of many students who really like the Google package, because as you know, I like it too. It's very easy to move around. But they have similar tools that the Google, that Google has.
Okay, good, and government safety and, and security is key, obviously.
Huge.
Um, so I'm ha, happy to hear, hear that. I know just related, um, so this will probably come after the migration, but, uh, I saw that some of the committees and boards have been given email addresses, the, the board members and the committees at, at large. I guess post-migration, we're gonna be looking, I imagine, at, at email addresses for all either committee members and/or at the very least committees, uh, the tree committee had brought this up, asking...
There just might be a cost related to each email address. Like, I know for Gmail, it's like eighteen dollars a, a month for, for every email address, so I don't know if we wanna incur those, those costs for the tree, but if, you know, if there's a, like a box that you create and somebody has access to the box somewhere, you know, if it's the clerk or if it's the chair that can access, I'm, I'm saying box, I'm not sure what, what I mean.
An email address.
It sounds good, but, not an email address, but some sort of like...
Like a Dropbox?
A Dro, some sort of Dropbox with information, or like a portal, you know, some sort of portal. And I don't know if our portal costs money, it, to run that portal.
We, I, I think these are, these are all options we can explore where we can work, definitely.
Yeah, 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 so it sounds like it would be prohibitive to individuals having email addresses, but may, maybe arguably worth the committees, so if, you know, someone had a, a tree question or a... So, if, you know, someone had a, a tree question or a architecture question or, you know, conservation, they might be able to go.
Yeah, I mean, we could look at repurposing the portal, maybe, for that, for sort of that purpose.
There's chat spaces. You could set up chat spaces in SharePoint and, um, meeting spaces. They have a, a tool similar to Zoom.
Sounds to me like maybe a, a training of, or, you know, uh, like when, even, I'll, I'll throw myself in that category.
Yeah.
Probably.
Just, uh, you know, someone coming in and, and teaching, uh, staff and, and electeds how to use this.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, good idea. Yeah. Okay, so next is the code enforcement report, and I'll keep that one brief as well. Incident reports, uh, there were sixty-two, uh, one hundred ninety summonses, three FATs, which are field appearance tickets. As always, you can reach out to code at area code six-three-one-seven-seven-four-zero-zero-six-six or to Chief Owen at A Owen at portjeff.com. For non-emergency issues, you would call six-three-one-eight-five-two-COPS, which translates to two-six-seven-seven.
And of course, Andy will be at the meeting on the thirty-first giving his public report.
With the Suffolk, yes, with SCPD. Yes, thank you.
The Suffolk Police.
Also, just a brief reminder from the court, if you have any outstanding tickets, please be sure to contact the court to get on the calendar. Uh, renters are due for their annual permits and the online application process is now open. So, just those reminders.
Can I just throw something out there too?
Sure.
So, uh, another aspect of this, of the, the reports that we received, um, for, from a management standpoint is we started having, a couple of months ago, we started our, our department head meetings. And every, every other week, there is, every other Monday, there's a department head meeting. And these meetings have been, uh, working really well because the departments get to figure out when, a- as they speak together and in the same place, how they can, where there's, uh, uh, opportunities to collaborate or share service or, you know, someone knows something that somebody else doesn't know, so they can inform each other of those things. And it's a, it's a pretty, pretty robust and interesting conversation and, um, and it's been very productive. And, um, so, uh, from, and you, you mentioned, you, the reason why it sparked my memory was that, um, the, um, the court, the clerk of the court comes to the, to, comes to these meetings as well. She is in her own right a department head, Elizabeth Kidney. And, uh, her, we, you know, we realize that her role touches so many different roles in people who work in, you know, in, uh, or, in the, with the department heads, from building and planning to code enforcement to clerk's office. So, and treasurer. So, it's like, Elizabeth is like the spoke of the whole entire village practically. But anyway, she's, she's one of the spokes, um, uh, I mean, one of the hubs. So, um, anyway, so it's, that's part of the process we've im- implemented as well. And if any of the trustees want to attend, one trustee can attend a, a department head meeting 'cause I'm always present at department head meetings. But if you wanna take turns and sit through one, you're, you're certainly welcome to do so.
Can we be sent a, a schedule and maybe, uh, sign up for, for the meetings?
Just give me a call. Hey, can I attend this?
When is the next one?
Yeah.
It's mo- they're, every other Monday, we have one Monday this week. So, it's, uh, not next week, but the following Monday.
Twenty-second, so that'll be the twenty-second.
Just one question. I, a while ago, we split off, um, the prosecutor from doing like building and code. And how's that working out? Is it?
I'll, I'll give some of that update when I get mine. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
The next one.
Okay, sorry to interrupt again.
No, not a problem at all. Uh, Mayor, as a matter of fact, you just mentioned, uh, shared services, which is a perfect segue to the report for DPW. During, um, excuse me, during pickup, excuse me, during, um, during leaf pickup, we had, uh, return pickups. And those were made possible by shared services between departments, parks, and country club personnel help DPW. So, that was very, very integral to the process and to being able to do that. And again, in terms of personnel, to move to a very recent event, we had nine DPW employees out this morning, starting as early as four-thirty. One was out at four-thirty and eight others started at five o'clock. So, that was a Herculean effort to clean up after this latest event.
And I know the, the public's been noticing too, have seen on social media some posts go by thanking our DPW department. And, uh, just wanted to, anyone who's not on social media and seeing that, uh, you know, just-
I can tell you, when I arrived, I go down through the village every morning for coffee and I saw all the spillage and the runoff. And when I drove home tonight, it was like it never happened. So.
Yeah. Bravo to them.
Yes. Yes, I'll relay that. Thank you. The, uh, in terms of all departments, again, working together, for example, the head of DPW is working with the treasurer regarding leases for vehicles and vehicle assessment, also preparing equipment for winter. That's been going on for a bit. We don't, we haven't had the snow yet, even though they've been promising it. Working with the president of the bid, James Luciano, to establish sidewalk clearing, uh, maps and, excuse me, and protocol. And also working with trustee Casse regarding flooding, climate resiliency, jumpstart. And so, again, everyone has really been collaborating and it shows in our meetings. And that also gives an opportunity for additional collaboration where you may not have thought it was possible. So, any questions on the DPW report? Thank you. Next is parks. Of course, another effort is all decorating that goes on around town, which looks fabulous, but takes a lot to put up and take down. And also, the head of parks is doing, is obtaining quotes for netting, for an outfield fence at Joe Erlin Field. Has one quote now and awaiting two others.
And that was the netting that's gonna extend the fence?
Potentially.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
So that softballs don't go into the yard across the street.
Right.
Has there been damage?
No.
Not yet.
No damage.
Not yet, but that's a, they're trying to prevent it.
It's gonna happen.
Yeah.
He promised to give back a hundred softballs in return for a hundred thousand dollars worth of netting.
Is that what he's finding?
It's gonna be expensive.
Well, our, uh, our Mill Creek steward has, uh, hundreds of softballs that, I guess, the foul balls that went up in the, the other direction. And he has, he has them all on, they're graded on a scale of, uh, the condition that they're in. So, you can, uh, wanna, if the village wants to purchase them back, I think you can get a good deal on the-
Yeah, but we stopped that. We actually prevent that now.
Right, right.
That's good.
With, with netting up to prevent so, you know, the foul balls from going in.
I'll check another carpet for, for some coins.
There you go, there you go. Perfect. Stephen's got it.
So, next is the recreation and village center report. It's astounding to note that in twenty-twenty-three, almost one hundred thousand people visited our village center. And that's, from my mathematics, about a ten percent increase over the year before. So, it's definitely being used to potential, absolutely. Excuse me, sixteen thousand three hundred seventy people entered the village center in just the month of December. In December, we had the month-long festival of trees. And our staff begins preparation for that the month before. So, starting the first of November, we have staff time for that event. This year, I'd like to thank the Parks Department who worked with our recreation center personnel to take down and bring to storage the, those trees. So, thank you to them.
How do we calculate, um, is there an automatic counter or just, just a logistical curiosity? How many people are coming into Village Center?
There's somebody sitting at the, uh, at the front desk.
Yeah.
Oh, do they, that's part of their, okay.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
Literally.
Sure, sure.
The best way.
Yeah.
The best way. It's okay. Sorry.
No, you're fine. It's probably more.
Yeah, that was a while.
I was just gonna say.
Probably more. That's a-
That's, that was a while.
It's probably under by a couple of percent.
Sure.
Probably is.
Well, that's why I was curious, yeah.
Yeah. So, the farmer's market was slated to begin last weekend. And in fact, because of the weather that weekend, about half of our vendors had phoned, uh, or communicated to say that they weren't coming, at which point we decided to cancel. So, it will actually begin this week. Happy to report that we have a new employee, Sharon Filbrick, who has taken the lead on providing free programs for residents, including what we call Avalon Walk, Senior Stretch, Senior Fitness Dance, Sing Giggle Walk and Workout Classes, Walking Club, and Stroller Fitness. So, as of now, we have a hundred sixty-four people already that have participated.
Sharon's also populating the, uh, recreation programs Instagram account. And she's doing a really great job.
Yes, she is. She is, and doing an excellent job. She has el- she has elevated that.
And you saw that there's even a walking program at the country club?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Yes, there is.
Watch out for bow and arrow.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Just watch out. If you're walking on the country club golf course.
The hunters.
Watch out for the bow and the arrow.
Is that, is that a problem?
We'll see.
It has in the past.
It is for me.
Is it, is this being addressed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, to the extent.
I just don't wanna throw out something to the public and then, uh-
It's being looked at. Alright, I'll, I'll give you the update. So, that, that was kind of like a little too cavalier.
Yeah.
A little cryptic, yeah.
Yeah, we, and I can't talk about this, right, Attorney Moran? So, we're, we're, we've been, we've received reports of, um, of, uh, people on the golf course have seen deer running across the golf course with an arrow in their body. And we've seen, we've had reports of deer being dragged off the golf course with, that are deceased from a bow, an arrow, from an arrow in the body. And so, we looked at the code and the code indicated that it is, uh, not allowed to, uh, fire. Firearms are not permitted. And under that, um, description of, of, it's not firearms, it's something else, bow and arrow are listed in that. So, we need in a, we need a, an interpretation of code to make sure. And then, to see how, how to enforce that unless somebody's there and sees it happen, uh, we have to figure out how that gets enforced.
I was gonna say, we don't know for sure if it's happening on the golf course or not, right? Uh, it could be happening elsewhere than they're running onto the course.
That's correct. That's correct.
We are, we are sure of the tree stands that we see.
On the tenth?
Along the golf, along number ten.
Fairway?
Yeah.
And also going up number, uh, eight.
And these are on private property or on the-
They're on private property.
So, they shoot the deer on their property and the deer runs away.
They're in their perch on their property and they shoot the deer. Sorry, Lord, I'm not, I'm not-
And they run out to the country club.
Horrible.
So, yeah, so, I, I throw it out there. I'm glad you asked about it. I'm sort of glad we're getting to talk about it. But we need an interpretation of the code and then how to enforce the code.
Sure. Is there, uh, I don't know if there are ca- cameras on the golf course? Is this something?
No.
No, not to capture that.
Let me review the code and make some suggestions. It's not a novel thing that has happened on town property where people hunt, so.
Sure.
We, uh, we've done joint task force with the DEC and other people tried to enforce illegal hunting. We've used trail cameras, which have been successful in prosecution. So, there's things we can do. But let's start the first step, seeing what our code says, if the code itself needs work. Because if it's a code that we don't use often, who knows when it went in and what it says. And we'll take that, those steps as they come.
Thank you.
Well, speaking of the golf course, we now have the, we now have the country club, uh, year-end update. And we saw thirty-four, over thirty-four thousand rounds of play last year, according to manager. And in the membership, we initiated our automatic renewal already for the season and also have completed a comprehensive inventory of equipment and soft goods. So, that was, that was a very important and integral mission that was accomplished. And the first Board of Governors meeting convened on the third.
And the second one on the tenth.
Mm-hmm.
When is the next one?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
So, they're meeting, uh, weekly initially.
To get-
To get the, themselves up and running. And, uh, on Monday, um, on Monday, uh, Pat Sullivan was there to answer questions. They, they had a, a comprehensive discussion about, uh, winter projects and trying to prioritize. And so, there's a whole list of the, of the discussion items that came out of that and they'll send it to Pat. He'll look at what, you know, can be done without, without a, a cost, without costs with just the crew that can do it and prioritize what, what other items need to be done and if, if, um, you know, procurement needs to happen to, to get them going. So, um, it's a good group. It's a good group of, uh, of golf members. The Board of Governors, uh, sort of, just a little background on the Board of Governors, I don't know if we talked about this before, but there was a Board of Governors, the, the, um, in the, in the code, the Board of Governors president was automatically received an appointment to the CCMAC, just like the president of the Tennis Association automatically received an appoint, an appointment to the CCMAC, which is the Country Club Management Advisory Council. And when the Board of Governors sort of, um, uh, dissolved, um, the, they're left sort of a hole in how golf was being represented or not. And, um, there were golfers on the CCMAC and there are golfers on the CCMAC, but there wasn't a group of golfers that was making the recommendation to the CCMAC for bringing forward, when needed, to the Board of Trustees to vote on. So, this gives the, the golfers, uh, the voice that the tennis members have. There are three tennis pla- three tennis members, um, what were tennis members when tennis was operating. They still have a seat on the CCMAC. Um, and, uh, so, all three of them were on the Tennis Association Board. So, um, the, the Golf Board of Governors wanted more of a voice and a say in, in the priorities that the CCMAC, uh, took forward to, to the Board of Trustees. And that's, that's, they're grateful to the opportunity and they're, they're, um, happy to get involved. So. One, one note, which isn't noted in here, is, um, so the president of the Board of Governors has now an automatic appointment to the, or will have an automatic appointment to the CCMAC. I think we have to put that back in the code. I think that CCMAC code changed without real public, uh, feedback or anything too. But, um, with that said, we're gonna have to, um, put that code out for public hearing 'cause it's changing substantially, um, with the Board of Governors president now going to have the appointment to the CCMAC. So, the CCMAC code will change. So, we need to bring that through the whole port, the whole resolution process and public hearing and then a vote for pu- public comment and then a vote. So, it's kind of a big deal.
I, I have some, uh, concerns about the country club. You want me to wait for my report or?
No, we're on the country club. You can sure, talk about them.
Tom Natola approached me about his evaluation going forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you gonna give him an evaluation statement?
No.
Oh, okay.
I would though. I think Tom is a tremendous addition to our country club.
Well, I'll certainly take your input for that. That'd be great.
I, I talk to Tom quite a bit. Um, the staff up there is concerned a little bit about the RFPs also on the bunkers. We, we know, I know a lot of the, I still know a lot of the vendors up there at the country club. And I know that, uh, only one company's gonna bid on the bunkers because of the added expense that was put into the RFP. Uh, and I, I hope we can correct that and bring more people in.
Which added expense is added, I'm sorry?
The increase from two million to five million was one of them. And fifteen thousand dollars was added for some reason. I don't know what that reason was.
Two million to five million, what do you mean? An insurance buy? You mean a?
Yeah, performance.
We're reviewing those point, those points with Attorney Moran and spoken with Mr. Natola about that several times. There were other concerns they had about the RFP as well, which are, um, not movable. They are, they are points that need to be followed by New York State law. So, we are, the treasurer and I have been, in fact, working with the manager to find different ways to procure the same items they've been procuring. And we were able to help with that in terms of state contract prices potentially. But going back to, going back to the bunkers, there are, there are some legal requirements that we will not overstep. Others, we're discussing with Attorney Moran. So- So, we should be able to firm that up within the next week or so.
Is it gonna guarantee that we get companies to bid on these?
Guarantee is a strong word, Trustee. Understanding the concerns, because they weren't just your concerns in reference to the lack of responsible bidders. The clerk, and I, along with Tom and the Treasurer, had took a look at the bid. And as, as the clerk stated, some statutorily required things still need to remain, but some other items, we believe we can address in order to make it a more enticing bid for people, let's just say that. Whether that guarantees something or not, I can't, that's.
I know the membership is quite concerned about the condition of our bunkers and our cart paths. I think the cart paths are probably, in my opinion, a priority over the bunkers, the condition that they're in. And these are, especially the bunkers, it's, it's an off-season project. It's very difficult, as we did twelve years ago. We renovated the entire golf course. They did it three holes at a time. Membership is very understanding. During the season, it's a little bit more difficult for these members who are paying a fee to be a member. Restrictions going on. I also have a little concern about the country club fund balance. We don't have, to my knowledge, a financial report yet for the end of that fiscal year.
I have hung up the phone about two hours ago with our auditors. The financial report is going through their quality control review. At that point, I will, should be able to finalize the audit. I just today received the audit adjustments. I need to review them to make sure of their efficacy and then go over them with Cullen and Danowski, who are our auditors. And then, hopefully, in a short period of time, I can get those financial reports, have them distributed, give them to the clerks so that they can go to all of you. And then, we can finalize the 2023. For the fund balance, but any specific questions about the fund balance that you have for it?
Yeah, the last financial report that I received, the country club had a balance, a fund balance of one million and seventy-two dollars.
A million, yeah, seventy-two thousand, yes. That was the carry forward actually from twenty-two into twenty-three. So, that's the same, that was the ending fund balance in twenty, fiscal year 2022. Because 2023 is not finalized and I haven't done any of the final adjustments and closed it out, we don't have that final number. I expect the number to be a little higher than a million. But until we punch all the numbers in and do the adjustments, it's hard to tell exactly where it is. The expectation was that it was gonna go up a little bit. With that in mind, there were some, there were some financial, I wanna be careful with how I say it. There were some ways to do journal entries that were not done in the appropriate manner. That I have changed the process to more reflect what New York State requires for things like deferred revenue. Membership fees pay from April through December. So, seven out of those nine months occur in the next fiscal year. So, that money needs to be recorded as deferred to the next fiscal year. It doesn't get recorded once you receive it, that's not the way it works. So, I've changed that, and that's gonna tweak the fund balance a little. It shouldn't make a massive difference, but it may affect it. Part of the concern also was the active fund balance, which is right now, we are through the new memberships, up until we got the membership money, we were operating at a loss because we were spending more money to maintain the course than we were taking it.
Historically, it happened every year for?
Yes, and that's what Tom, you know, and my discussions with Tom about that.
Would we have any advantage to switching our fiscal year?
No. Because one, now that it's being done right, it'll, it'll roll forward correctly every year. Yeah, it was just, it was just something that should have been done a long time ago that, it's gonna be done now. It's gonna be just a Band-Aid, we're gonna rip it off. And every year now, it's gonna be, everything's gonna be fine.
Okay.
With that fund balance.
Thank you.
No problem.
Just getting, getting back to Tom, is this like an annual review or is this his? Because it feels like he's been here forever because he's been, he's done so much for already.
His anniversary was, of, his hire date was January fifth.
So, is he, am I hearing that he's awaiting?
That was the one year.
Yeah, he's waiting.
That was one year.
So.
We're scheduling it, don't worry, it's okay.
I don't know why he's in such a rush.
Well, I think he had asked you at six months and.
Oh, I spoke with him at six months.
Okay.
Thanks for, thanks for staying on top of that.
All right.
But your input definitely would be welcome, Stan, I mean, a hundred percent, because you could talk to him together if you want to.
Yep. I like that.
Okay, so that was the club, right?
Yes. So, on to building, planning, and environmental services. We have already announced, but I will re-announce that the Planning Department is open on Wednesdays from nine to four-thirty. The unit continues to work on several policy-related projects or legal-related projects. One is a revamp of the long-term rental code, reviewing prior work. And there are group meetings regarding that. The next one is targeted for the twenty-third of this month. In addition to that, a review and possible recommendation for update of the fee schedule is also in progress, as is a codification of a pre-application process. Okay, so all of those are being worked on. And lastly, also, the unit is working together with the Parking Committee, which next meeting is tomorrow morning.
All right, I just wanna add a couple of things. So, this is, this is Andy Frayling's report. He includes in here all the, the applications and all kinds of like documents out of the municipality program, right? The, the. And, oh, and he also included in his report, so there's, there's a letter being drafted to all, I think it's businesses in the community. And do you wanna talk about this one, do you?
Oh, go ahead, I can jump in if you.
All right, so.
Do we have all this?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 I saw it in here.
Yes. So, it's, it's a draft, but it's to property owners and business owners. And basically, the gist of the drafted letter says, we're looking at the code, we're asking you to look at the code, we're following the code, we're asking you to follow the code. And we're not gonna be punitive about it, we're gonna give you some time to get your stuff, your stuff in order and, and get your, your applications in, in order and your permit applications filed and et cetera, et cetera. And whatever fees you have to pay, we're gonna give you some time to do it. It's not punitive, but it will be enforced. So, I think that letter is just the, it's the communication that's needed for everybody to understand this, you know, how this is gonna operate and, and what's, what's going to happen going forward. So that people aren't, you know, business owners and landlords and tenants and, and residents aren't taken by surprise. So, and that there, there's, there's the code there, there's code stuff going on. So, you have to adhere to it.
Yeah, I'm really glad to see that, you know, I know that this came up in a conversation a number of months ago. So, I'm glad to see that this is moving forward, just at a glance. And, you know, being advised that, that we will be undertaking an endeavor since it's sort of, it's going to be an official letter from the village, I wonder if giving a clearer time period, so, you know, beginning such, such and such date or so many months from now, just so that, you know, sometimes not, not necessarily our government, but sometimes when government says we will be doing something, is it next week or is it next year or?
Listen, take a look at the letter, I'm sure Andy would like it.
I could, I could, because. This is a, a first letter, let's just say, and it's a draft of a first letter. That letter is, is basically giving, putting everyone on notice that the house needs to come in order, right? It's the second letter that these businesses will get in priority order once we do an assessment of, you've got our first letter, here's our second one, this is your issues, building issues. You have third, whatever the day's number is, to come in, address your concerns, or everything, carrot, you know, wanting to work with them, not against them. And at the same time, bring a prop, prop, bring in necessary compliance and health and safety with the code. And as long as we're talking about it, they are, they have been identified to us, you know, at least to me and, and the village clerk, significant issues with certain businesses that are just, despite either notices or whatever, are just being ignored. And what was also verbalized to us, certain directives which I give no credence to, that may or may not, certain businesses you can go after, certain businesses you could not. So, that was just what was said, and I'm not talking out of school and I say it. I don't give that any credence because I don't think anyone would say that. Sometimes people, when they're hold to accountability to their actions, as how did we get here? They like to point in other directions. So, part of my meetings with Andy, and it was gonna be part of my report, was bringing up proper procedures. We don't wanna overwhelm the Building Department, we need to prioritize the more egregious offenders on a health and safety basis such as fire suppression and other things as opposed to a sign in the window. Sign in the window generally is not killing anybody as, you know, so there'll be global, the idea is to get global compliance with the code as quickly, efficiently, and again, we're not having to take out the whip to do it. So, that, that's the goal. And as, as Trustee pointed out before, taking over those prosecutions in district court, I could tell you, they're, they're archaic. I don't, I'm not, not here to speak ill of anybody, but at the end of the day, there's cases on that calendar from three or four years ago with zero compliance. I don't know why they came back to court every month to report, and I have the files. But nothing's been done on certain files, whether residential and commercial, for literal years, which I found odd because the same person who was prosecuting those tickets was the same person also in charge of the compliance. So, it, it's, there's a lot of housekeeping that needs to take place to get us back to zero. We're getting there, it's only been one month of prosecutions. And I think we, we fined some people a bunch of money and set up meetings with some of the older files that have been on the court docket since literally eighteen, twenty-one, with no progress. And these are, these are homeowners, these are, these are small businesses, it's just. So, it, it's a work in progress, but overall, the idea is to get compliance, right? So, that's the goal and get compliance, compliance as quick as possible. So, that, what you're seeing there is a draft of, of an idea of, hey, we, Andy Frayling's quote-unquote the new sheriff in town. His staff has identified some issues, and some issues are readily observable by, by Andy. Try and get your house in order and, because you, the other letter's coming at some point. So, it's, it's a stepped and staged process that we're working on.
Procedure, a question, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, please.
So, when you're in court and these folks come in and there's no compliance, it just rolls on the calendar?
That's what used to happen. For years, for literal years.
A thousand open cases.
I have a different philosophy of prosecutions. You know, I could always invite you back to court. We're in the process of developing what I would call conditions of your discharge. I'd rather you come in, plead guilty, give a court order telling you to do certain things in a certain timeframe. And if you fail to do that, bring you back to court. I'm also reviewing the codes associated with that as first and second offenses and violations of, of, of the code. But what was happening is exactly the opposite. You come to court, something as simple as you need a building permit for your pool. Two years, in some cases, and still no permit, and has been to court twenty-six times.
And the process without approval permit is what, filling out a form and paying something?
Again, some, sometimes it's a little more complicated than that.
Right, because if it was put in without?
If it was put in without a permit or if it needs zoning board variants. You know, in, in some cases, it could be a little more complicated. But I'm not understating it when I said on some of these files, zero activity in the Building Department, but yet twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-eight court appearances. Which doesn't serve our residents well either, they're, they're angry enough to be there. You know, so what we're doing, some of those more egregious cases, we already have some meetings set up with residents trying to solve their issues with the Building Department and bring about compliance. But it extends to the businesses as well.
I appreciate that clarification, just as a, one more point of clarity. So, this, this, some draft, some version of this letter is gonna go out to all the businesses in Main Street? I'm just, I'm always like type A goody-two-shoes. And so, if I received this letter as a small business, which I might or might not, because I don't know where you qualify, I would think that something was wrong, you know, even, even if I had been, so I'm just trying to put in on my small business hat and see that perspective, so.
And, and if you was a small business, get this letter and call the Building Department, say, hey, I own twenty-eight Main Street, and ask some questions?
Yeah.
Because we know the issues, we know most, where most of the issues are, is, you know, and.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll.
And again, it's, it's, we're not on a fishing expedition, right?
Sure.
We, we're just, because a lot of codes, a lot of simple codes, neon signs.
Sure.
A lot of simple codes that are readily visible have not been enforced.
Right.
For whatever reason.
Yep.
And there could be good reasons not to enforce it, right? You wanna, you wanna develop business, you don't want small businesses to close, how do they attract business if they can't have the neon sign? You know, little things like that. But the directive and the, the marching orders are compliance with the code, so.
Sure, all right, so if I have any comments, I'll email them to?
Did, I think Andy directed the letter.
Andy?
So, send them to Andy.
Okay, thank you.
Also, one other thing I wanna.
I copied the clerk on everything too.
Of course, thank you.
Under the EOC, there's a, the roof leak, there's a, there's a leak in the, in the, at eighty-eight North Country Road that spans the whole entire building. So, it was interesting because of the last storm, it was, the, the storm on two, a week and a half ago, it was coming down right through the tiles and dropping into the buckets that were all over the place catching the rainfall. The storm last night, not a drop. So, the, the, the guess is, but we're having it evaluated.
Nothing?
Today, nothing.
Wow.
Nothing. So, because it was a, I'm told it was a storm, southern, a southerly storm coming north, that it wasn't hitting the areas that were causing the leaks. So, it's not, it's not the roof, it's not the roof. There's a couple of sections of the roof that have been addressed and may be causing some leakage, but it didn't look like that based on last night's storm. It looks like it's the facings and the sides of the building. So, we're having somebody take a look at that and will, sort of on an emergency basis and take, and it, because it, it's, it is an emergency. They can't operate in that building. The, the Fire Marshal says, look, if this was a building that was in the village somewhere and it was, this was happening, we'd shut it down. So, they did, they shut down half the building the other day to, to, you know, address, address that safety issue. So, we're, we're focusing on it as, as an emergency.
Glad to hear that.
And just to expand, just as we're giving examples, sometimes it's not the business. Sometimes the building owners are responsible for certain things within the business and are not, the, the businesses are attempting to comply.
Sure.
But the owners are, are not so quick to help, throw the dollar at it. So, it's, it's a multiple, and we, when I say we, the enforcement team in the Building Department are keenly aware of who's culpable.
Very good.
So, it's, it's, you know, although they might perceive when we do this enforcement that the, the village is coming after me or the village needs me to do this, the issue is really between the tenant and the landlord, which is not why the building's in compliance, which is causing issues.
Sure.
For the tenant. So, if we can get the discussion to happen between tenant and landlord as opposed to tenant and village, that's one of the things we're trying to facilitate.
And, and it's never, or in what case would it be village landlord?
In, in my lease for my, I don't know, pizza place, the landlord's responsible for fire suppression.
Right, so then.
We're getting ready, we, we, in this hypothetical discussion, you don't have fire suppression, we should shut you down because there's twelve apartments above your pizza place.
Right, right.
But the landlord's responsibility, not mine.
Right, so then, so then can the village not have to harass the tenant who then has to?
Listen, there is a.
I'm not, I'm not, harass is a strong word, but.
No, but the, the issue is mul, it's multifaceted, obviously, so if, if.
So, if it's Rebecca's, if it's Rebecca's B and B, for example, let's use.
Let's use a different example.
In this hypothetical pizza place, if it comes.
Let's go back to the pizza place.
In this hypothetical pizza place, when it comes to the time to issue tickets, right? We issue tickets to both parties, the building owner and the tenant.
Right.
And so, we have a culpable party here because at the end of the day, our responsibility is to make sure it's safe. I don't care who makes it safe.
Of course.
And if, if the owner, if the tenant steps up to fix the suppression and withhold his rent to the landlord, that's their problem.
Right, right, right. Right, right, right.
I need to focus on our problems.
Yes.
So, again, that's one example where, although it's affecting the tenant, it's really the responsibility of the building owner, but either way, our residency, there's a possible threat to the health and safety, which needs to be remedied immediately.
Sure, sure, yeah, that's a toughie, but the way you explained it, sounds like it's a fair, you know, I just want to make sure it's fair to our small businesses who...
Meant to be fair to everybody, and more importantly, which it was voiced to us, uniform and enforced against everybody, not just certain people.
Consistent.
Yeah, thank you.
Moving on to the treasurer's report?
Just one more thing on building and planning, we have the hearing tomorrow.
Oh, yes.
Conifer two, it's on the website, it's the next step up by the train station, and if the public has opinions, or wants to hear what's going on, I think they should attend the hearing tomorrow, in this room.
And I understand that it'll be live broadcast.
It'll be livestreamed as well.
Oh, that's great, yes.
Yes.
And there's a comment period?
Yes.
So, if someone's watching online, even if it's not that night, I guess they'll probably announce tomorrow what...
How to do it.
How many, you know, how to do it, and then what the timeframe is there for feedback.
Planning board.
It's a planning board, yeah, public hearing, public planning board. What time does it start?
Six-thirty.
Six, and then, okay, so the meeting starts at six, and then the public hearing is at six-thirty?
I'll look it up right now.
And then that public hearing holds open until, for sixty days or something like that? That timeframe is sixty days or something like that?
I don't know if it's sixty. They'll announce it tomorrow, yeah. Just one more thing on building and planning, I met with Mr. Freyling this morning regarding the bamboo, a proposal of bamboo code for here in Port Jefferson Village. The Conservation Advisory Council has forwarded a resident concern, and they had previously, you know, spoken about adopting a bamboo code, because we have home rule here, so Brookhaven Town's bamboo code does not apply in the village, and there are multiple concerns, you know, from property owners about encroachment of bamboo that's on one person's property and getting onto another, which is, you know, can become a huge financial burden, property maintenance burden, and so we don't have anything in our code to enforce what homeowner's responsibilities are, how to, you know, what one would have to do, not just homeowner to homeowner, but also homeowner to village right of way, if there's bamboo that's...
Homeowner to everything, because bamboo goes like freezing.
Everywhere, yeah, you know, it could grow up through sidewalks, asphalt, like everything, and so, we had a very productive meeting. The CAC had essentially looked at Brookhaven's code and said, well, this is a great place to start, so what Andy is going to do is bring Brookhaven's code to the rest of his...
I wrote it.
Nice, there you go. So, he's bringing that to the rest of the staff here, you'll get to read it again, I guess, and then look to see if there's anything, any more clarity that the village wants to bring, and then, once all the parties have seen it, obviously, it's a code change, and would come back to the Board of Trustees for review and public hearing.
In your discussions, you might want to consider an outright ban of bamboo?
Without a doubt.
As opposed to certain types of bamboo that run, because not all bamboo run.
Yeah.
And from an enforcement perspective, if challenged, you're left to determine the genealogy of the bamboo, which is a Herculean task for a seventy-five-dollar fine.
Yes, and that was in...
Doing DNA on bamboo.
Right, that was my one comment on the Brookhaven code, specifically listing the genome, and I was like, wow, I've never seen genus listed in...
Because not all bamboo runs, so, and it's only certain bamboo caused the issue.
Yeah.
Which, I'd love to say, you could only use this bamboo and every other bamboo, you can't, but you're left in the same place of trying to identify it.
Right, well, and it's troubling, like I know, you know...
And it is so destructive.
It's so destructive, and impossible, once you, and it's almost a public good to create this code and have this conversation publicly, because I think some homeowners don't understand. They say, I want screening from my neighbors, and I want it to be evergreen, and I don't want pine trees, and, ah, look, you know, you could make a nice bamboo screen, and they don't understand they're lowering their property values by doing this, because a lot of people, if they go to look at a home and there's bamboo on the property, they turn around and say, no, thank you.
One of the proposals back in the day was to treat bamboo almost like a structure, that it's illegal unless you get a permit for it, because you can put bamboo in and properly contain it.
Right.
And one of the ways to do it is concrete, a concrete barrier, a steel barrier.
It's steel, because concrete doesn't...
Whatever the barrier is, steel barrier, and, you know, maybe we tweak the definition of structure to include subterranean greater than eight inches, whatever you need to properly screen bamboo, which would require the permit to put it in, I, just, if people wanted to keep it. I don't know, there's ways to do it better than it's being done.
Right.
And do you enforce it?
You give a period of compliance.
Well...
So, we are banning bamboo unless you have a permit, and if you don't have one, you have until January twenty-twenty-whatever to get it.
That's not what Brookhaven...
I know.
Right, and, yeah, I think, even the CAC...
I could cite flaws in my own work.
No, 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 I'm just saying, that was my understanding of that code, and that was a big discussion at the Conservation Advisory Council, because even one of the members has bamboo on her property, paid thousands of dollars to have it removed, and it's popping back up again already. And so, I think we don't want to put a burden on our village residents who are...
You know what else is a fun one, trustee Kessay is, you planted it, you got a ticket for it running, it ran to your neighbor, but now it's growing in your neighbor's yard, they got a ticket.
They got a ticket.
And then that comes down, and then it goes, and the four corners are all in court every other year to deal with it.
Right, and I think that's where, you know, the CAC's objective was to make sure that if it's clear where the, you know, if we can have some kind of procedure where it's clear where the bamboo's coming from, to be sure that it's enforceable to make that homeowner put at least a barrier, to make sure that they contain it, they remove it from their neighbor's property, whatever, you know, it gets very complicated, I know, because now we have different, it's civil, it's this, it's that, but, you know, so there's these different layers of what this code might include, but definitely, as a baseline, not planting any new bamboo without, you know, great permitting, or just not at all, because they, you know, near us, someone popped some bamboo in, and, you know, the neighbor was so concerned, they had the Long Island Invasive Species Management Area come ID it, and they said, no, this is not one of the New York State's illegal bamboo, it's one of these slower bamboos, and it's like, you know, you're still, anyway.
I'm definitely looking forward to that.
So, the Conifer hearing is tomorrow, six-thirty PM here, there is a pre-hearing work session for the planning board, if anyone's interested, that's at six PM.
Thank you.
And do you know what the public comment period is yet, or?
I don't.
Okay.
Okay, Treasurer Gaffka.
Good evening. Just to go on to my report, I'll start with the resolutions. I'm going to have two add-on resolutions, which I'll circulate to you all, that'll be on the end of the month, the January thirty-first meeting. One of them will be a change order for United Paving, for the second pay requisition for the Station Street project. They just recently finished up with the pole being moved, some electrical and lighting work, and some manhole work, and, you know, when I saw the invoice, it was above what the contract amount was, which was three-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, sixty-four hundred dollars above, and there was some extra work. So, Bob Brown, who's from Land Design, is going to send a change order request over, which I'll present to all of you, which will then need to be funded, so that we can pay United Paving for that change order.
Did they do something we didn't ask them to do, or was that all included in the...
It was part of the project, it was necessary, the sign needed to be moved, a manhole was too low, they needed to raise it, so they needed to purchase a riser. The appropriate procedure would be, as they see this work coming, and they know to come right to us, like, hey, we need this change order, to make everybody aware, you know, we need to do this. It's already done, it's in place, so I'm going to get that change order, I will distribute it to everybody so that you can see it, and then I'll have a funding resolution along with it.
Who bid out that work, who gave the estimate for that work?
It was bid out, and it was given to United Paving Court.
And so, whose responsibility was it to identify these aspects of it that...
Land Design is overseeing the project. As the engineering consultant, it should have really been United Paving going, telling Land Design, and then Land Design coming to us, to the board, saying, we need, you know, we're going to have to raise this, because we have additional work that needs to happen.
And, I mean, obviously, work has costs associated to it, I'm just, you know, even as a homeowner, when I get bids for projects, I'm never happy when they come back and say, oh, we didn't realize this thing, that really seems like it should have been realized by someone like, you know, a group like Land Design, who could identify perhaps, you know, there are unforeseeable issues, and then there are potentially foreseeable issues, so I just don't know if there's anything that...
My understanding, part of the problem was, is that one of the subcontractors, and for full disclosure, this is part of a grant project with Empire State Development, so we have an MWBE requirement, so there are certain subcontractors that needed to do work under United Paving, and one of those subcontractors had a delay in equipment, that they didn't get all the equipment until the end of September, October, so they weren't able to finish right away. So, I mean, this work was done primarily last winter, and we, they just had to wait till they got the rest of the equipment. That delay may be part of the reason why there was a lack of communication of the change order, I don't want to speak for anybody else, just that I noticed it as soon as I got the requisition, because I want to finish paying our subcontractor, United Paving, so that we can then get reimbursed the Empire State Development Grant, which is three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So, would like to get that money back into the village, so that we can pay down some of the debt that we have outstanding, and this is one of those requirements. So, I've been on top of Land Design, I've been on top of these contractors to try and get this finished up. This is just one step, I noticed it on the pay rec, so I'm not going to put it in for payment until they fix it. So, what they're going to do is redo the invoice, send it to us for the contract amount, with an outstanding amount for the change order, that will need to be approved by the board before it could be paid, so there will be a third pay rec to United Paving for that change order, we're going to split it out.
Why didn't they include that in the estimate?
They didn't know, sometimes when you're doing a project of that size, there could be some unforeseen circumstances, moving a sign, a manhole...
Or you want to win the bid, not particular to anybody or anything, but this whole change order thing is like maddening to me.
And I agree completely, I'm trying to logic it out, wouldn't that be actually, in this case, Land Design, or, you know, sometimes it's grocers, people who put, who go out and bid these projects, they're, they have a list of, you have to, you know, do this paving, do, you know, put this, and I feel like it's more them leaving that out of the bidding, it's more of the RFP that's the problem than the people bidding on it, because the people who are bidding are looking at, to my understanding, a sheet of, this is the work.
These are the requirements, right.
And so, if manhole cover and moving a sign isn't on the RFP, then it's not, I'm not...
That's just part of, I mean, there was some electrical components, too. In my experience, a lot, most of the time, a change order could happen, because it was completely unforeseen. When they laid the, when they laid the paving in the blacktop down, it just, it just didn't line up the way that they thought that it would line up, and they needed to move a manhole, maybe something sank, maybe there was a problem with a conduit, and they realized, oh, you know, we didn't see that, now we have to fix it, because once you, you know, it's like the human body, when you open it up, sometimes you find, you know, when you go for surgery, there's some other stuff. It's going to be sixty-four hundred dollars.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not, this is, this is...
On a housing project, yeah.
No, this is more of a philosophical...
I think that's well within...
Sixty-four hundred?
Sixty-four hundred.
Four hundred of...
I thought you said thousand.
Six thousand, four hundred dollars.
Six thousand, that's why I was...
I thought you said thousand, yeah.
Oh, sixty-four hundred.
That's within the margin of error of over three-hundred-thousand-dollar bid.
Was it, did you hear that?
I heard sixty-five thousand.
Okay, no worries.
Sixty-four hundred dollars.
No worries.
I think that helps the discussion.
That does, that does, but, no, more, I guess, we were having a more philosophical discussion about, but let us move on.
You should see state projects when they're bid for buildings, holy cow.
Oh, sure, sure.
They get them this year, and the planning, the building doesn't start for five years later, and the change orders come through like...
Especially with cost of steel and everything these days, yeah.
Change order is standard in industry.
It does happen, it's not, I mean, if it was sixty-four thousand, I would have, we would have had a larger conversation.
Okay, yeah, move on, yes.
Okay.
Glad we had this talk.
So, we'll have the change order, and then I'll have a budget amendment that we'll need to fund it, because it's not currently in place, that funding. Second one will be tied to one that Clerk Perillo stated with Civic Plus, going to have to take from fund bounds to fund that change, not for the operating costs, the monthly costs, but for the design of it, so that will have to happen, I'll send that all to you once it's done, so you guys have an idea of what it looks like. Are there any questions on the resolutions I presented to you all? Going into some of my updates, one of them, which, you know, I just wanted to touch on, because it is a little complicated, is migrating, and it's related to two of my resolutions, migrating the trust accounts, these three, that I've identified into the general fund. So, we have three trust accounts that are really operating, they're operating accounts, they have operating expenses, they have, they're not, it's not other people's money, it's our money, it belongs in the general fund. It's going to be, my anticipation is, it's a net zero to the general fund, with the revenues and expenses that come in. It's just a matter of housekeeping by having them recorded in the proper fund, rather than being in the trust fund. I just didn't, you know, wanted to just go over that, if anybody had any questions about it, I tried to explain it, but just in case.
So, essentially, they're, the funds are somewhere else, but those are net zero, and so by moving them into the general fund, it is a net zero?
Yeah, but, for instance, the farmer's market fund, historically has been kept in trust, it is not a trust fund, it is not a trust account, doesn't belong in trust, it's an operating fund. We use our property, we pay a vendor, we have a staff that oversees the market, and we, and we charge a fee. That's by its nature, it's an operating, you know, expense, so it belongs in the general fund. Going on to Finance Committee, Finance Budget Committee, I'm hoping to have that finalized with five members by the end of the month. We have six, seven interested candidates, all of whom are very experienced, so we're hoping to get that five within the next week, and reach out to them, and then present it to the board for approval. And then, as I'm starting my budget process, have them involved in recommendations, and going over what their charter is from the village.
Right, I'll just add to that, one of the things that I would like the Budget and Finance Committee to look at to start with, is the rate program, and the use and the rates at the Village Center, so that they can bring their wherewithal, their expertise to that discussion, because that keeps, you know, issues, questions, past practices, everything keep popping up, and we don't have a real firm policy. I've seen drafts of policies, but I don't have, I've never seen a real firm policy on operating the Village Center, and how we make decisions about what organizations have fees waived, what the fees are, should it just be residents and non-resident fees, should it be not-for-profit? I really appreciate the community, the resident expert review of that, of that policy that doesn't exist, and help us come up with one, then take it, that, to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council, since they are advisory to the Village Center and to parks, and then get those two committees to take a look independently for different purposes, and then bring it to the board, and bring that policy to fruition. And then, we don't have to, you know, scratch our head and wonder and make a decision based, so equally, equal opportunity to the Village Center, so we're not revenue, we're not losing revenue, but we're not focused on making revenue, we just want to operate this facility so that it's not losing money for the residents. So, and it's a resident, you know, facility, open to the public, but taxpayer dollars will go into it if we're running at a deficit, so we're trying not to do that.
And part of that is, can we legally waive, right?
We have, we have a lot of, a lot of opinions on that, and we'll give all those opinions to these committees, to help weigh, go through them and understand. So, there's municipal law, there's, you know, there's all kinds of, the State Controller's Office has opinions, we've weighed through all of them, and it, rather than just making it a decision from the Treasurer's Office, the Clerk's Office, and this board, let's get the people who actually use the building, the facility, and get them to weigh in on it, and take some, take some responsibility for it, and bring it to us, what they feel is the right way to go about this.
And as part of that, I know previously we've discussed, so there's the policy, which I'm going to be very glad to see become unambiguously, you know, clear, and... uh, unambiguously, uh, you know, clear and, 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 uh, equally enforced for all across the board. Residents, non-residents, nonprofits, whatever it's decided. But then, uh, we've also talked about creating sort of a, a business plan, a more formal business plan for the Village Center because, uh, for, for years, I've just heard discussions that it's underutilized, that, that these spaces are here and that there's sort of potentially money being left on the table because if, you know, if, uh, whether it's someone at the Village Center, you know, whomever it is would be, uh, proactive in a way to, uh, try to attract, you know, um, business gatherings or parties or, you know, whatever we want to see at the Village Center and bring those events in so that the rooms are always booked out, uh, as, you know, as, as frequently as possible.
Look at the, the report from the, um, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the report that we got from the Village Center manager. But it talks about all, all those, all the bookings and, you know, what, what we saw this last year.
Right.
It's a pretty busy building.
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
You know, uh, is it over utilized or underutilized? That's, that's a good question. Um, or is it priced, is it priced right? You know, that's another good question. So...
And, yeah, I know our staff there works very hard and it's no asperger on them. It's just, you know, uh, as, because it is sort of more of a, a business, uh, you know, something that, that would...
A catering business?
It's not, no, it's not a catering business, but it's something that, as we're saying...
An event business? Event management?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So that, this is where we, yeah, this is all the things that we have to consider because it has, it has very much evolved over, over the past number of years since two thousand and five, I guess, when it opened, right? Twenty years. It's gonna be twenty years soon.
Yeah, and, and I, I would, I would love to see, uh, if there's any, any way to increase, uh, the revenue from attracting, you know, and, and again, I'll, I'll take a closer look at those specific numbers. If we're able to get those numbers up a bit and then for our residents and nonprofits, because we're offsetting from private parties and whatnot, uh, being able to offer a lower cost to our residents and nonprofits who wanna use it.
Sounds like a punch club.
Yeah.
There you go. We got a model already. There you go.
Okay, so that's, right? So thank you.
Yeah, so we're hoping to have that, that list to you all, um, circulate the names and then have a resolution to, to appoint everybody to that board by, uh, January thirty-first, so, um, moving on, budget, uh, there is a resolution scheduling a tentative budget hearing, April tenth, uh, with then to vote on it after, you know, having the hearing, uh, the next meeting, which would be the twenty-fourth. Uh, and I'm gonna be sending out to all the department heads, uh, their requests. Um, leaving out statutory requirements, you know, uh, payroll liabilities, insurance. They don't need to, it's not about that, it's about what do you think you're gonna need to operate, uh, ne- for the next fiscal year? Um, I'm gonna take that information, I'm gonna work with all the department heads and we're gonna come to a conclusion over what's the best way to keep, uh, taxes low. Um, in the country club, uh, I, you know, it's a little different for them, but to try and maximize, uh, what they need to operate the country club. But for the general fund, to try and keep taxes as low as humanly possible, so that we can continue to operate and provide the services that we need. And I'll base that off of all the discussions with all the department heads. Grants. We, I just submitted to, was it today or was it yesterday? Yesterday, um, to the Town of Brookhaven for, uh, the portion of the harbor front walkways. We had a lot of discussions back and forth with the town to make sure that our submission package was correct, that our subcontractor's information was correct. So I sent it back and forth, had good conversations with them, it was accepted. So that's gonna be, that's in process. We should be getting that money back shortly. Uh, I mentioned Empire State, the three fifty for Empire State. I'm working with the subcontractors and our Land Design to get that up and running, to report everything in our contract compliance portal for New York State so that we can get that grant funds in. Um, have reached out to DASNE. Uh, we have a couple outstanding grants, uh, one of them for our DPW building, when they built the Emergency Command Center. Um, we have not received that money. Uh, it's kind of at a standstill where we need the okay from, uh, the, a sign-off essentially, which we haven't gotten yet. So we're working as many different avenues as possible to try and get that moving. We had a couple discussions about Tucker House. Um, we met with, uh, Legislature Engelbreit, uh, yesterday. Had a great conversation about that, so we're working on how we can finish and keep moving forward with the village's procurement of the Tucker House and...
The history buffs had a real...
Yeah.
Row meeting, you know?
History's great.
I ran into him at the legislature's opening meeting, just said hello, and that was the first thing out of his mouth. So he's all in.
Yeah, yeah.
And he's a great resource.
It was a great meeting.
Yeah.
So we'll meet next with, um, Historical Society folks and Chris Ryan and Mark Sternberg and we'll just, we'll just start trying to move that forward um, quickly. But as the, the status of that, do you wanna, do you wanna talk about the status of that particular grant?
We're still waiting to, for, to close on the property. Um, we have a contract, I believe, um, we have a, you know, put a deposit down, so, but we need to close. So we're gonna work with the granting agency, uh, to try and see if there's a, a availability for the village to not have to lay out the closing costs. Um, and to work with the granting agency to see what we can do to, to get that, uh, property closed on so that we can then start the next...
Since they approved those funds, would they cut that check so we don't have to go for reimbursement? That's, that's...
My understanding, it is possible. It's been done in the past. Um, so we're gonna try and see if we can do that so that the, you know, we don't have to have that lag. Taxpayers lay out the funds and then we have to wait to get it back because sometimes that can be problematic.
Is there a time period in which we need to close or use those funds?
We're working on it. Yeah, we're working with Attorney Moran and, and with...
The, the, the legal file to close on the property is ready. It's, the money is the issue.
Well, the, the question, the, the money has been granted. Sometimes you have to use that money or lose it by a certain...
Right now, I think we're still good. Um, but we're, I think we're up against the clock. We need, we need to move the proj- the closing forward.
So we've reached out to DASNE. They're the granting agency. We've reached out to them, um, via phone call and email form. I'm waiting to hear back. Uh, once I get that conversation going, I'll see what next steps we need to do. I'll work with the clerk, the mayor, the attorney, and we'll, we're gonna get that done so that we can close on it and then start the next process of, you know, cleaning, securing, and then continue to try and get more grant funds uh, to restore that property. Because, you know, the, as legislator Engelbreit stated at the meeting, it's just, it's a wonderful opportunity and there's a lot of history there in that house, so...
And so we're also gonna try and, and, once we have the deed, once we have, uh, ownership, uh, we're gonna be able to pursue the, uh, house, getting the house on the National Registry.
Great.
Getting it, uh, um, uh, landmarked.
Landmarked.
Historical, making it an historical landmark or what, uh, terminology's escaping me right now, but we have to have the house, uh, title in hand before we can pursue that. So we stand ready to do that as well.
All right, excellent. And my, my understanding was the grant was not just for the, the cost of the property and house, but also to start these, these next steps.
Yes.
Are we sort of, I, I don't know how, how close of a, of a timeline it is. I just don't wanna lose any, uh, funding if we're, uh, or, you know, are we putting in for a, an extension of funding?
Uh, we need to have the conversation with DASNE first and foremost, so that we can at least get step one done.
Right.
Um, there was, I believe it was built into the grant, uh, to close on the house, buy the property, secure the property, clean it up, and then an additional amount towards the restoration.
Right.
Um, so, uh, that's, we're on step one, we need to close on it. And so that's what we're trying to do. So we're gonna keep you all updated as that goes on. We re- submitted for the climate resiliency, the first pay rec for that. Uh, it was approved by their, they have a kind of a board with the state that kind of makes sure that your submission meets their criteria. So that was pushed over to their fiscal department. So I don't know when we'll get that money, but it's at least in process. Received CHIPS funds for the paving project and I think I've touched on just about everything. Um, are there any other questions on the rest of my report?
Yes, Steve, one question. The, uh, you, you talked about the, uh, the budget hearing on the twenty-fourth.
That's gonna be the vote on the budget. The budget hearing will be on the tenth.
The tenth, I'm sorry. We can, we have to do a tax cap, um, to exceed the task, tax cap. Would that be the same date or...
No. Well, I'm, ideally, you'd want, if we're, if that's a discussion item, um, it would have to be put forward in a resolution drawn up prior.
You should, we should do it, immediately do a resolution to pierce the tax cap, whether you pierce it or not. Exactly. It's just a insurance. Yes.
Yeah, that would need to be done, to be safe ahead of time.
So I think, I think we can do it on the tenth, but I, I would like to do it before.
We should just do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a little history in, in waiting to the last minute and it is, it is very cumbersome.
I was involved in one situation where, for whatever reason, two of the trustees recused and they couldn't pass it. And it was, we had to have an emergency meeting to get it passed for the no, no, simple reason, they didn't understand what it meant.
Right.
So we should get it done.
Yeah.
And just, just so everybody knows, if you were to go down that route and it, you don't pass that particular resolution, then the tentative budget defaults as your main budget, right? Um, so the tentative budget has to be stamped in by the third week of March. Um, so we're in process. We have, we have time, but I'm working with everybody to get that done.
I also just wanna raise the, the, the twenty-twenty-three audit by Colin Donowski.
Yes.
I, you mentioned it earlier. Can you just give the board a brief update on where that, like, last year, that, that document was dated January fourth? And this year, it's not gonna be dated January fourth, but the AUD has been submitted...
Yes.
To the State Controller's Office.
Correct.
But this board hasn't seen that audit yet.
No, the AUD is the, it's like a supplement document, um, to the state. Uh, it's not the final financials.
Right.
Um, so that, the final financials are in their quality control. Um, and that will be the management letter, any material weaknesses if they find them. I'm sure they'll still have the same one with the capital assets, which we are going out, uh, for RFP for. So we hope to have, hope to have that done before the end of this fiscal year, which would be May thirty-first. Um, but, so I had a conversation with them and I, you know, I politely requested them to speed it up. Um, but it's, you know, they're, they're dealing with a lot of, and my understanding is the industry, they're, you know, employment shortfalls. So they're a little backed up. They're a lot of, we're not the only ones that are in delay with getting some of these financial documents.
So just so you know, that document's coming here first.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll come to the board first. And then we'll post it, right, to the website? Yes?
Yes, uh, my understanding will be, so I got the audit adjustments in first. I have to go over them, make sure that they pass what I think that they're looking at the right stuff, um, by initial look-throughs, that it looks okay. I mean, some of it is like GASP related, which is you're not gonna see it on our books. It's kind of for the financial statements only. Um, once we post those, I have to then, you know, close the books, send the trial downs, make sure that the trial balances tie with what they're saying are in the financials. Um, and then they would be able to distribute the financials, the draft financials, um, which would then go to, to the board. Uh, I would send them immediately to the clerk. She would distribute it to all of you. Um, and then once it goes final, as long as there's no issues, glaring errors, um, that would also then wanna be posted to the website and to all of you as well.
So would that be on the agenda on the thirty-first, do we think, or then on the fourteenth?
I'd, probably February. Uh, it's, it won't happen by the end of the month. It won't.
Okay, just so we're prepared, you know what's going on.
Yes.
I'd also like to prepare Colma Donowski to make a presentation after they submit, you know, we accept it.
Good. Yep, great. Plan for that.
Good morning, Drew.
Okay, uh, Attorney Moran.
Um, despite, uh, in, just in Mike, most of my report was gonna discuss the progress in building, which I think we've already done. The only thing I will add is, I will echo the, the comments of Tom Natola, who's, I've been working with Tom, holding the caterer accountable to the lease that they executed. And he's doing a, a, a yeoman's job of identifying the issues, notifying them pursuant to the lease agreement, the license agreement, and, uh, bringing back positive, um, results, um, and holding them accountable to the, to the, to the license and the agreement that they signed, which is, is an effort in itself. So I echo the, the good job that Tom's doing and, um, it's, it's a lot, cause there was, there is a lot going on, a lot of moving parts to that entity from general maintenance to other things. So he's, he's, he's doing a great job. So other than that, I have...
Caravan of contractors.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a direct result of our efforts.
I think we should, we should get a complete list, uh, because it's a lot.
Mm-hmm. Tom's on it. We have lists. We have identified issues, timelines to rectify those issues. He, it's really a comprehensive effort to hold their feet to the fire. Other than that, I, I yield.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the attorney?
No, I know.
Okay. Um, yeah, so now, uh, what I, I, we have mayor, uh, and Village Board of Trustees here. Um, and we also have for a board discussion, the poss- the, to continue the conversation about the Board of Ethics and, uh, I mean, of the, the Code of Ethics. And, um, I, I wanted to see if, in respect for our Attorney Leventhal's time, would, can we, can we shift those two um, activities and, and ask to discuss the Board of Eth- the Code of Ethics? First, I know that there was some outstanding questions that this board had. I didn't have any questions necessarily about it, but I, uh, so I'm gonna, I'm going to yield to my colleagues and see if there's anything you have, uh, is left over, any research you've done, anything you wanna bring back to the board, um, for, for discuss, for further discussion?
Sure. Is it, so, if I, if I had known you were, he's, has he been on the clock? Have you been on the clock this?
Yeah, we could've started...
Yeah, we could've started with you.
Unless it's free.
My clock is slow.
There you go, there you go. And now you're sitting down. Okay.
Go.
Do you wanna, anyone else wanna start?
I don't have, I really don't have anything, so...
Okay.
I do.
You wanna start, Stan?
I'll start.
Okay.
I spoke with, uh, Steve earlier tonight. Uh, I read through their code many times. Uh, I took notes here, so I'm gonna be reading a lot of it. Um, I totally agree that the code needed to be updated. I don't know when the code was originally put in place, but I agree with the code that's in place or gonna be in place, we hope. I have some questions and one question, one major question is that, uh, I understand that this board would be selected by the mayor. Um, my question would be who, other than the mayor, would vet these people, um, before they come to the board?
Would, would you like me to, to discuss that?
Yeah, yeah, cause I have a number.
Sure. Uh, so the way, uh, based upon the discussion at the last meeting that I attended, the code was revised to provide that the mayor would nominate, uh, appoint, appointees and that those nominations would be confirmed by the Board of Trustees. In answer to who will vet, uh, any member of the Board of Trustees certainly has the, uh, the, the right to, uh, do whatever vetting they wish to do. For example, uh, when I was appointed many years ago to the Nassau County Board of Ethics, uh, and at the time, uh, the court had recently invalidated the Board of Supervisors and created a county legislature. And the first appoint, the first, uh, uh, the first chair of the, uh, of the legislature happened to have been Bruce Blakeman, who's now the Nassau County Executive. And he called me in for an appointment, interviewed me, and I met with him, and he vetted me personally, uh, before casting his vote. Any member of the Board of Trustees would certainly be entitled to do the same thing if they wished. Different municipalities handle it differently, different boards, different members of boards are more or less active in that process. And it would be an individual decision by each board member as to how they wanted to handle it.
Okay.
I, I wonder, I just had a, I, it's on the same topic.
Okay.
Is that okay if we, or do you wanna circle back? Okay. Um, I just had a, a thought in that regard. Um, so there's, uh, this, this initial, uh, appointment of five members is gonna happen all at once, whereas in subsequent years, because of the staggered terms, it's gonna be one, one, uh, either reappointment or appointment every, every year, as I understand. So, um, I'm wondering if in the, in this initial appointment set, uh, since there's five members, five members of this board, if we each had, uh, a, a nomination to put forward for the, the initial board and then, uh, you know, moving forward, uh, have that, you know, just the, the board nomination recommendation?
I'd rather just have the public, if they wanna be on the board, submit their names.
Which they have. They have, you know, but...
Cause I'm not gonna nominate anyone, cause I feel then, um, the fix is in. I've got a person on the board.
Well, it, it, but one could make that argument if it's... Well, it, it, but one could make that argument if it's not spread out, like, for, uh, I mean, if the, the fix wouldn't be, if, if there, even if you had your, your person on the board, Bob had his person on the board, uh, you know, it's.
But I think it's cleaner, uh, that's just my opinion, I think it's cleaner if they just, if it's just not involved, we can vet them, but not choose them.
Also, I don't think you want to give the impression to the public that there's horse trading going on.
Yeah.
That if you don't vote for my candidate, I won't vote for your candidate.
No, absolutely, no, 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 but I'm, I'm just saying, there's, there's a list, and how many have come in so far interested in this particular?
I haven't looked at it in a while, but well over five.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, no, I'm, I'm not suggesting horse trading, I'm just suggesting if each of us come forth saying, uh, or, or maybe we all, uh, select five off that list and see where our lists overlap. I'm just more of a, um, uh, you know, board, the trustees coming forward with the folks that, uh, you know.
That, well, even as the code is currently, the proposed code is currently drafted, that process could certainly take place informally.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there certainly could and should be an exchange of opinions and ideas among the members of the board.
So is it fair to use the planning board or the zoning board of appeals as analogous to this, um, where there is, uh, the mayor gets the appointment by law, whatever?
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, the Board of Trustees has a, has the ability to approve it, and, and nominees or recommendations come from all over. It could come from trustees, it could come from residents, it could come from the person themselves saying, I raised my hand, I'm very interested in this, and trying to get people to volunteer for a board that has such an, you know, a comprehensive, um, uh, task ahead of them is probably something that you're not going to, like, the planning board, you, you, you just, you're, it's a commitment.
Mm-hmm.
The zoning board, it's a commitment, the Board of Ethics is going to be a significant commitment, so.
I think as an example, I've had people come to me and say, I heard about, there are committees, and I just tell them, go to the website and pick what you like, and I'm not saying what committee you would be best on.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
No, and, and I'm not saying nominate, I'm saying going to that list, so it, I, if we have, if this code moves forward and there's to be a Board of Ethics, if, uh, you know, there's a scheduled board discussion about, hey, you know, here's, everybody take a look at that list and, you know, uh, hopefully we have resume, we often ask for resumes, I think the clerk's been really helpful with that, uh, as far as whoever submits their name, we can request CVs, and just everyone having that, that comprehensive, um, ability to, uh, look at the CVs and bring forth and say, hey, these, you know, these three or these five really caught my eye, what about you, mayor, what about, you know, trustee Loaks, and, and have that discussion, um, as a board? Is that something we're all?
Makes sense.
Yeah?
Makes so much sense. It's, and the Make a Difference website, that's what that's there for, really.
Yeah.
So, and the CVs do come in.
Yeah, all right.
So, going forward, um, I contacted Steve shortly after our work session here, uh, and I asked him for some villages that I could contact, because I want to find out for myself how these boards work. Steve responded very quickly, uh, asked me to, or told me about the village of Sag Harbor, but he got back to me real quick and told me that, uh, maybe I shouldn't call Sag Harbor because they're inactive. Um, I didn't ask Steve at that time what inactive meant, um, so I'm asking now.
Sure, sure. Actually, trustee, what, what you asked me in our conversation was for contacts at the municipalities that I serve as ethics council, not just limited to villages, and I gave you those contacts, and, uh, the, uh, villages differ in the, their level of commitment to having a robust ethics program. Administrations within villages differ. It's not unusual when there is a transition for one, from one administration to another, there'd be a period of time during which the new administration is getting its priorities in order. Uh, so there, there are some, there are many, many municipalities around the state who I jokingly said to you earlier tonight have boards of ethics that haven't met since the Eisenhower administration. Um, the, uh, it, it's really incumbent upon the village itself to, um, to be, to be committed to having a robust program, and choosing the right people, uh, adopting a code that requires the board to meet quarterly, as this one does, um, all of those things are helpful. And I will also say that, uh, the, if, that the boards of ethics that get the message out through educational programs, through a link on the website, through materials, are the ones that are active, because once officers and employees of the municipality, the more they learn about, about the Code of Ethics, the more questions are triggered, and they realize that they may be encountering situations themselves that warrant a question to the Board of Ethics. So that's what I mean by inactive, I hope.
Yeah, okay. Um, I also reached out to Southampton and the town of Huntington, uh, I got no response from Southampton. Uh, town of Huntington, um, uh, the, the gal that I spoke with at the town of Huntington, Cheryl Randazzo?
Yes.
Uh, again, told me that their board was kind of inactive, uh, and that the town was kind of slow replacing candidates that dropped off the board.
Well, I'm going to agree with the second part, but not the first part. It's not unusual for, um, appointing authorities to, uh, delay in making new appointments when vacancies occur on the Board of Ethics, because, uh, there's something about elected officials, they think they're involved in very important business, and the, uh, the Board of Ethics is not always the highest on their list of priorities. You know, ethics is the sort of thing that people don't pay much attention to until, until they do. Uh, and so the town of Huntington has been slow in filling vacancies on the Board of Ethics, although we've always had a quorum, and we've always been able to continue our business. Uh, the, the town of Huntington has consistently met every quarter, as required by the board, issued, um, advisory opinions, just investigated a complaint and produced a determination regarding the complaint. I'm pleased to say that it resulted in a finding that there was no violation of the code.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, every employee of the town of Huntington has been edu, has, has been, um, has attended ethics training programs. So, uh, in my opinion, the, the ethics program in the town of Huntington has been effective and, and, uh, and, uh, accomplished its, its, its purposes. I'm constantly receiving phone calls from members of the Huntington, uh, administration, the town board, the town attorney, uh, the supervisor and deputy supervisor, as, asking me informally for ethics advice also. That happens a lot, too. In the municipalities where I serve as ethics council, often, uh, an elected official, a department head, will want a quick informal answer, and sometimes their questions are answered informally, as you would call any attorney, as you would call the municipal attorney here, for a quick informal opinion. Uh, so, yeah, the, I'm, I'm actually pleased with the way the town of Huntington ethics program has performed, although I do agree that the town board has not been quick to fill vacancies.
Okay.
Trustee, actually, mind if I interrupt, the mayor, if it's okay? I told you guys my parents were in an accident.
Yes.
My nephew just called and said my dad doesn't look right, and he's 20 years old, and the only one there.
Okay.
If I could take my exit.
You are, go.
Please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Fair things, okay.
Yeah, best of luck to your family.
Drive safe.
Never fails. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, you mentioned that the town of Huntington, uh, trained all of their employees.
Yes.
And.
With the possible exception of some C's ones.
Yeah. In my tenure here, I don't recall any training, ethic training taking place for any department heads or employees in our village, so.
We had one in July.
I'm kind of thinking maybe we're putting the.
Other than, other than July.
Right, right.
It's really, it's really, in my view, a, a four-part program. First, adopt the code, then produce educational materials and training on the code that you've adopted, appoint a board of ethics to implement the code, and have, uh, a presence on the village website, where people can go for various reasons, such as, uh, accessing the code, submitting, uh, inquiries, um, getting access to educational materials, that sort of thing.
And then press go.
Right.
Um, so who, who's producing the educational materials?
Well, uh, I do that in the municipalities that I represent.
And is that something, sort of like the code where it's like, you know, because I, I, in, in doing my.
Remember the presentation that, the.
Yeah.
Training, the workshop that, that Stephen gave us?
Sure.
That's the material.
Yeah, and a plain li, uh, I always recommend that the village or the municipality also prepare a plain language guide to the Code of Ethics and publish it together with the code in a booklet. That's a very important, uh, piece of educational material, in my view.
Does that, does that exist already? Because, because in, in my research, um, you have versions of this code in, in Huntington and Sag Harbor, and, and others looks almost identical, and so I just wonder if instead of the village, you know, investing and creating, like, do they already have educational materials which are, you know, sort of the, the workbook for this code that already, if, if municipalities have gone through it, why reinvent that wheel?
Well, I have developed a set of materials which I adapt according to the needs of the particular municipality. You have already, uh, given me your, uh, local view about certain changes that you wish to have in this code. Uh, the programs are very similar in the various villages that I represent, they're not identical. Um, uh, but yeah, the, you would benefit from the work that I've developed over the course of my career.
Very good.
I noticed most villages have a code that's either five lines, which is what the state requires.
Right, right.
Or they have a comprehensive quote code, and they have a board. Um, and I also think it's incumbent upon whoever is in, sitting in these seats in the future, if there is a board, to make sure that we keep this, that they, we keep it alive.
Sure.
There are, there are really three types of bad boards of ethics. One, first are the boards that never meet. The reason they're not meeting is because they're not doing their job, they're not getting the message out. The second are boards that don't understand their mission. Uh, educating the members of the ethics board is, of course, of critical importance, having them understand the code and what their obligations are under the code, and how to implement those obligations. And the third bad board are boards that people perceive as being, uh, political, under the influence of the appoint, of the appointing authority. That's, that undermines the whole credibility of the ethics program.
Mm-hmm. Stan, were you going to continue, or did you?
I would just, I would just ask if I could get a few more references, uh, if you could just text them to me or email them to me.
References from, from me or?
Villages or townships that have active boards of ethics.
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I had a question, just to go on something you were just saying first, sort of the, the frequency of meeting. Um, I know it says quarterly, uh, and it, I understand that annually, uh, you know, it makes sense to train, uh, not only our, our staff, but the ethics board as well, uh, to be sure that everyone, uh, understands the code as a living document and not just, you know, because I think it was a really productive ethics, uh, session we had here in, in, was it July? Um, that, uh, people were able to hear something and then raise their hand and ask a question and, and, you know, say, okay, for example, and that's a really important training, I, you know, agreed. Um, beyond that, the other, you know, if, if an ethics board is meeting quarterly, but they don't have anything in front of them, what is the, um, what are they doing with, with those other three meetings?
Well, there are, there's business that occurs in public session, and there's business that occurs in executive session.
Sure.
It's an executive session that complaints would be considered, uh, requests for ethics advice would be considered.
And this would be as needed.
That's, that's as needed, right.
Yeah.
Uh, but then there's the public portion, there's the administration, the financial disclosure law, there is, uh, the, um, foil requests are received, uh, and, and dealt with, um, the, uh, there's the business of populating the website with materials, there are sometimes discussions about recommendations that can be made to the, uh, governing body about changes to the ethics code based upon the experience of the Board of Ethics. There's business that occurs in public session, and there's always something to discuss. And having quarterly meetings also gives members of the public the opportunity to attend, see that their village has a Board of Ethics, bring their concerns to the Board of Ethics, uh, if appropriate, if appropriate for public session. And, uh, it just, I think is a healthy, a healthy way to.
So those are, those are public meetings, then, those are?
The Board of Ethics, like every board of the village, uh, is, must comply with the open meetings law. That means every meeting of the Board of Ethics convenes in public, whatever public business there is to be done occurs, and then if there's a business that the open meetings law permits to be considered an executive session, there's an adjournment to executive session, and then a return to public session in order to adjourn the meeting.
Sure.
That, that happens with the Board of Ethics, the same as any other board, same as this board.
And, uh, the, um, branching off that, two things, one, in the code as written, I believe it says that the Board of Ethics, uh, will be the ones reviewing the disclosure forms.
Yes.
That come through, um, at our, our marathon discussion, which was very fruitful and helpful, um, I believe you had said that you and, and your staff review a lot of the forms, so I just wanted a, a clarification there.
That also occurs differently in different municipalities. In the town of Southampton, over the years, the Board of Ethics, at each of its meetings, has a stack of financial disclosure laws, and they, here, take, you take 10, you take 10, and, and over the course of several meetings, they, themselves, and, and I, sitting at the same table, taking a stack myself, review the forms. In other municipalities, uh, particularly larger municipalities, that function is delegated to me, and I prepare a report based upon my review of the, of the forms.
And so as the code is written, would be more of the first example for, for our villages, as I understand.
No, not necessarily. It, it, the, the Board of Ethics could delegate to me the task of reviewing the, the disclosure forms.
And what are the pros and cons of, of that?
Uh, the Board of Ethics members are, uh, uh, the pros and cons, really, it, it's a, it's a matter of what the members of the Board of Ethics feel is appropriate and wish to do. Um, uh, I guess I have a lot of experience in reviewing the forms, and can do it much more efficiently than, than volunteers serving on, on the Board of Ethics. On the other hand, if the board members wish to do it themselves, I'm 100% okay with that.
Sure, and it, you know, that's a toughie, because I could see, uh, members of a board who know that you've been in this work for decades and, and, you know, are respected in this field, um, might feel quick to, to hand off, you know, and say, well, you're, you're going to do a better job at this, um, but just because, you know, perhaps they haven't done, they haven't gone through it before, um, so I just, again, our, our code reads one way, but I don't remember seeing it that it can be.
Well, but i- if I'm ethics council to the Board of Ethics, I'm staff, the Board of Ethics, on the, on the board's staff, and if they have the, uh, responsibility for doing something, they can function through their staff.
So the board can direct staff, uh, separate from the, the mayor or Board of Trustees?
It's own staff, it's own staff.
Him.
It's, no, 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 I understand, not the entire village staff, but I, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, so the. just trying to understand, so the, the function, like the procedure.
The board should have two staff members.
Correct.
Counsel and a secretary. And there's certain, and the confidential work of the Board of Ethics occurs just within that, that family.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, they, I mean, the Board of Ethics would, would direct its secretary and would direct its counsel.
And that's akin to how the planning board and the zoning board?
Well, the zoning board certainly has counsel, I'm sure. And, you know, the, the client is the one who instructs the attorney. And sometimes the client of a municipal attorney is a board, sometimes it's the municipality as a whole, sometimes it's individual officers or employees of the municipality, it depends upon the situation. But certainly, when you're serving in a confidential relationship as the attorney or the secretary for the Board of Ethics, you would take your direction from your client, in the case of the attorney and from your, your board, in the case of the secretary.
No, I'm just trying to clarify, because are, are we as trustees able to ask for, for advice and, and, you know, from, from either our attorneys, or is that an approval?
You can certainly ask for ethics counsel, I believe, if you had an ethics question.
So my understanding is if you want to seek legal advice and, and create a contract with an, at the village attorney, it does require approval from either the village clerk or consent from the mayor. Because you're enter, you can't enter into a contract which is, and if you're, if the time clock is ticking, you're entering into a, into a contract with, with a consultant or a vendor or legal counsel.
And obligating village muddies.
Sure.
Thereby.
Sure, sure.
When I was talking about the attorney taking direction from the attorney's client, I was talking about the board as a whole.
I, I understand, again.
The Board of Ethics.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah, not the village board, right. No, again, I'm just, in all of these conversations, trying to understand what everybody's rights and, and procedure are.
But at, at the same time, with respect to the Board of Ethics, any village employee would be entitled to request advice from the Board of Ethics. And that request for advice would necessarily involve the services of the board's counsel.
Would, sorry, would or wouldn't?
Would, would necessarily involve the service of the board's counsel, because the board is not going to act without the advice of counsel with respect to these legal determinations that it needs to make. And in, in, in every municipality that I represent and that I know of, the opinions, the written opinions of the Board of Ethics are drafted by the attorney, as you would want them to be.
Would they ever be drafted by the, the staff member that's assigned to, like, I know, like Cindy Suarez does the, drafts the opinions for the zoning and the planning boards.
Right. Ethics opinions are much more nuanced than that and much more sensitive, and I would discourage that.
Would it be a conflict of interest if the village attorney was counsel to the Board of Ethics?
No, there are many municipalities that don't have an independent ethics counsel. That certainly could be the case. There are benefits to having an independent ethics counsel, in my opinion. The message that, that it sends to the village is that their inquiries will, or will be treated as confidential. But you certainly don't have to have separate ethics councils for the Board of Ethics.
All right, so that was that. And so, so counsel is, in, is it codified or, or, you know, in your experience and opinion, always necessary to, to be around for the, the Board of Ethics to, to gather? I'm just, in, my hope for this code, and again, I'm so glad that, that we're going through this process, because this is going to bring great clarity to village staff, officers, everybody, but that it's, you know, my hope is that it's written in such a way that it's unambiguous and can, you know, be digested, especially with supplementary material, by both any staff member but also especially the Board of Ethics who's going to be waiting in it more often and more intimately than, than others. So I'm just trying to understand if-
I personally think that that is an unrealistic hope and expectation on your part. I can sympathize with you for wanting that to be the case, but it is never going to be the case.
I'm not, sorry, please clarify.
The, the Board of Ethics, the Code of Ethics is sufficiently comprehensive, there, there's a body of law behind it, cases decided by judges, state law, opinions interpreting the state law. It's, it's legal analysis, it's legal analysis. And the Board of Ethics members who you are appointing are appointed to ultimately make the decisions, but they have to have the advice of counsel in order to make those legal nuanced decisions. Very sensitive, very important. You do not want to, you do not want a rudderless Board of Ethics. That's, that's a danger to the village, it's a danger to the officers and employees of the village, it doesn't serve the public to have a self-guided Board of Ethics.
So if, for example, a village attorney was to serve as the counsel for the Ethics Board but they don't have the tome of knowledge of all of these case studies, does the ethics code as written not, is it not substantive enough to guide the Ethics Board, to guide village staff and officers?
I, I have the greatest confidence and respect, confidence in and respect for your village attorney. And I'm sure that if you tasked him with representing the Board of Ethics, he would do a fine job. And where he wasn't sufficiently versed in the law, he would either reach out to someone like me or do his own research or do what is necessary to arrive at a reliable decision and, and give reliable advice to, to the Board of Ethics. So again, it is an option for this board to select the village attorney to serve as counsel to the Board of Ethics. I will say that there is an epidemic of ignorance out there, that the, the, the body of knowledge in, in this area is, is not well-known. And I've provided education and training throughout the state for many years. I've spoken to countless municipal groups, countless bar groups, and I can tell you that it takes a real commitment to develop the kind of understanding of this material that I think you want your Board of Ethics to have as a resource.
Sure, without, without a doubt, and I definitely, you know, we, we, I think everyone here at this table wants clarity for, for ethics, and again, to borrow your words, this is meant to be a shield, not a sword. And so, you know, making sure that it's written clearly enough that, again, our, you know, if, if a staff member has an inquiry, they can look at the ethics code and then if they are not sure, can go for an opinion, you know, a written opinion from the Ethics Board, who can hopefully look at the code and, and follow, you know, more or less a flow chart of, and I, I understand there's gray area between black and white, which is, which is why a board would exist.
Well, it's not, it's not unusual for municipal attorneys, like your village attorney, to be the first person to whom someone goes with a question. There's nothing inappropriate about that, that's fine. If that's where someone wants to get their advice, they're, they're entitled to do that. I also will say that I know of cases in which the municipal attorney has given advice that the Board of Ethics disagreed with. The Board of Ethics reached a conclusion different than the advice given by the municipal attorney. And though, in those instances, the courts have sided with the Board of Ethics. So the Board of Ethics, getting an opinion of the Board of Ethics is the ultimate protection for an officer or employee of the village who's contemplating some action and want to be assured that they're acting appropriately.
Sure. Okay, that's the, the thoughts that I had for now. Thank you.
The, I know that you haven't asked me, but I'd like to just quickly say that having heard the discussion about the conservancy and the fact that your husband is volunteering as counsel to the conservancy does not give you, in my opinion, a conflict of interest with respect to that matter. Article eighteen, section eight oh one of the general municipal law prohibits a village from entering into an agreement that will confer a benefit on a member of the Board of Trustees, and a benefit conferred on a spouse of a trustee is deemed to be a benefit to the trustee. But since your husband is uncompensated and is volunteering his services, the contract that, that the village is contemplating would confer no benefit on him and therefore no benefit on you, and thus no conflict of interest.
I appreciate that. We, we had briefly had that discussion in July, but I appreciate you reiterating that.
Sure.
Thank you.
You were just reminding everybody about that.
I, listen, I-
Because I remember that conversation happening.
You, you see my commitment to ethics and just making sure everything's above board, so. Thank you, Mr. O'Connell.
Sure, sure. Thanks, Steve.
Can't, can't say it enough, right?
What?
It's just disclosing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. If you need to go, you're free to go.
Next meeting is the-
Anybody, any other questions for, thank you so much.
And is, is public comment open, still open, closed?
I'm sorry, the next meeting is the-
It's, it's still open, public comment is still open until the 31st, I think. If we close public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Okay, on to mayor and village Board of Trustees reports. Many of the things that I had planned to talk about, we've discussed.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't know if anybody else, done?
Done.
Okay. Trustee can say?
No, I think I just had the tree committee met, we have, it's, it's robust, we have seven members, they're talking about their plans for the year, and I'll report back after the next meeting what those might be and, you know, also working with staff. And then I think there was one other, are those, are those in here? I think there's one other item.
I think they're at the back, right?
At the back.
Would you attach them to the back?
Last couple of pages.
There we go. Yes, there. That's right, fantastic. So the Beach Street Garden, just wanted to, I know I, I have an email out to Renee and I had CC, the clerk and the mayor as well, just want to see, either get a definite approval that the process that's been happening in previous years can, can begin and continue for this year. The email requested a hope to start to formalize the processes around the Beach Street Garden amenity, under either the Recreation Department or the Parks and Rec Committee, whatever the administration determines is most appropriate.
Are your ears perking up, Stan?
They are.
There you go, so.
And parks, I mean, it's kind of a collaboration right now.
Yeah, I think, whoever, whoever wants to talk about this stuff, please. But in, in the interim, typically, the lottery for the raised beds opens January 1st. I haven't sent anything out or created anything because hadn't gotten approval yet, wanted to make sure, you know, we can start this procedure and maybe open the lottery, say the January 15th through February 15th, you know, give it a month open. In the past, I've worked with Marissa down in the, the office to take the forms in, people submit these forms. If there's more forms than beds available, then we do it, like a randomization, you know, sign numbers, whatever it is, and then, and then notify from there. And the, the beds that are available are the ones, it's the difference between the folks who have had beds the year before and were in good standing, so they've, you know, they've kept their, kept everything harvested, followed all the, the rules of the garden, have been, have been working that plot of soil. They have the option to first write a refusal typically, to continue having a bed. Typically, the last couple of years, it's been about seventy-five percent of people, and then that opens up, you know, twenty-five percent, and I think last year we had one, maybe two, and I think they were non-residents who didn't receive a bed. The non-resident fee is much higher than the resident fee. So that's the, that's been the procedure thus far. If we can, if, I can help facilitate kicking that off. And then, I know I have a meeting with Renee about another related project, I don't remember which one off the top of my head, and hopefully discuss perhaps then how we move forward together in, in, in making sure that this process is formalized.
So we've started discussions about it already internally. One of the things that we've done is updated the flyer that applies to the program.
Great. Yeah, that was, that was in-
It needed to be a little bit cleaner.
Yep.
So it has been worked on and it's been updated to the fullest. Tomorrow, I'll discuss with Marissa and her, her understanding and commitment. I, I have a question, who determines whether someone is in good standing or not?
That's, that's been on my shoulders and I'm happy to pass it off to someone else's.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think that we need to, we need to have a bigger conversation then.
Sure.
And bring in Recreation and other departments and find out how to disseminate them.
Yep, yep. And that's, yeah, there's a, a contract also that's gone out annually, so again, I've been looking for this meeting. I'm glad to hear that there's progress happening, this is the first I'm, I'm hearing about it, so I'm, we'll be really happy to sit down and again, make sure that everything that has been happening, that information is passed along, it doesn't mean that that's the way that it needs to continue going. And I, I agree, you know, generally the mayor's been trying to pull, pull things together and, and formalize them, which I, I respect and would like to participate in. So if I can continue helping this process and making sure it gets, you know, gets to be where it needs to be and then, you know, make sure that it's under this umbrella to, to be sustainable.
Can we bring parks into that too?
Yes.
The park staff and recreation staff and-
Yes. I think Dave was on that email that I sent out as well. So I've tried to be inclusive, I can't include all y'all.
Parks, rec, parks and rec.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so we'll, I'll follow up-
And is that a hard deadline, the January 15th to February 15th, or does it kind of be pushed back a little bit?
It's not, I just-
To give yourself some time to-
Yeah.
To really acclimate the, the staff into the process?
Yeah, the gardening season typically has started every year March 15th, is sort of the, the earliest when people can start planting certain, certain kinds of plants. So usually letting people know in, in February so that they can start planning and, and doing their-
Okay.
Their whatnots, so I appreciate the, you know, whatever prioritization, I just, and I, and I've been checking the, there's also an email account that I would like to, to pass on to folks and maybe populate, you know, with the, the new emails, so that, you know, just, again, all of it's, all of it's passed along. And I know that I'm going to start receiving emails sooner than later from gardeners asking what the status is. I haven't even sent out the email, sort of letting folks know, hey, you know, typically in previous years, if they wanted to continue gardening, they would put it, get, sign a con, sign the contract and give their payment and have that in before the lottery closes so that, that would lock their bed in for them.
And what does the twenty-five percent number look like? So it's seventy-five percent generally?
It's out of tw- twenty beds.
Twenty?
Twenty beds.
Add, okay, so there are, I'm not, like-
Seventeen, nineteen.
Ninety, how many beds?
Fifteen, nineteen.
What?
Seventy-five percent is fifteen.
So-
So five, five out of the twenty beds turn around.
Oh, there are twenty beds?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, there are twenty two.
Oh, I thought you'd say twenty.
Oh, I thought twenty was the-
So we're running a whole lottery for five, for five people?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Well.
All right.
It's, if, if there's a better-
It's a big communication initiative for-
I tell you what, though.
Disappointing a lot of people.
I do it in New Suffolk, me and my wife have a bed, it's like this, and it's so, it's worth it.
Oh, I'm not thinking it's not worth it. Yeah, no, it's not.
No, 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 I mean, it's worth, it's worth-
Worth what? Like, no, that's a-
Like, it'd be worth it to be in a lottery.
In a lottery.
Right.
Oh, because it's so exciting when you win?
You can get a lot of, I mean, if you do it right, you get a lot of fruits and vegetables and yield and stuff, if it's done right.
Yeah, and people are so psyched up that we have deer fencing, like super high deer fencing and rabbit fencing and watering, automatic watering, like is, is, you know-
You've got groundhog.
We didn't have that.
Yeah, we went by groundhog.
Had to go.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, so, so there's a-
I got them by me.
I got them by me, too.
Yeah, there's metal fencing.
You gotta people proof it, too. You gotta people proof it, too.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's the other, yeah.
Mayor proof it.
But yeah, no, I, I know, and it's, it, it hasn't been so onerous in the past. Again, I'm, I'm all ears for-
The flyer's ready, right? It's just about ready.
Flier's ready.
So that's pretty much, and if Marissa knows that, I think, I think it's good.
Okay, all right, perfect. So I'll, I'll just follow up with that and we'll, you know, have her if I can help.
Thank you.
Yep. And that's, that's, that's it for me.
All right. Any, anyone else? No?
No, I think all my items were covered already.
Okay, all right. So do we have a motion to close the work session meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second.